Good eve- that's loud. Good evening. I would like to call this May 6, 2024 School Board Work Session to order. The time is now 6:00 PM. The School Board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will contribute to, will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the role?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson is excused. Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you.
At this point, I will turn the mic over to the Administration.
All right. Thank you, President Hardy. Very excited to have this Alternative Schools and Programs work session this evening. We have six of alter- six of our alternative learning programs with us. And I'll turn it over to Lori Beam, who's the Executive Director of Alternative Schools and Programs.
Thank you. Wow, that's loud. Okay, I'm gonna get us so we can all look at the same slideshow. Give me just a sec. There we go. So tonight, we are going to have each of our headteachers, principals present on each of their programs. And we're gonna go in alphabetical order. First, before you start presenting, I'm just gonna introduce everybody. From Best Homeschool, we have Cara Candelaria. From CEC, we have Craig Kind and Wayne Horeen. From E-Learning, I'll do the presenting. From GHA, Trevor Pearson. From SMART, Afrika Badi. And from Star of the North, it's Lori Willett. And we'll start with Cara Candelaria.
All right. Well, thanks for having me here today. I'm really excited to talk about Fairbanks Best Homeschool because all of us at Best love Fairbanks Best Homeschool. We are so invested in Best and the staff there is just so excited about being there and building the program and we love talking about it. So I really appreciate you all having us here. So I thought the first thing I would like to do, because I'm interested in this, was just talk kind of about the history of distance education in the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. And really, the concept of correspondence school has been around for about 53 years. Guided Independent Study was the first sort of version of correspondence study that they had in the district. It started in 1971 and guided independent study was GIS. And it was around for quite a while. It was sort of the same thing for many years. Basically, students would get packets. If you were a secondary student, you'd get a packet from BYU, Brigham Young University. And if you were an elementary student, you would get a packet that was created by a certified teacher that would just sort of create some material for you based on your grade and then whatever the standards were at that time. And that's how it continued from 1971 until about 2008. In the fall of 2008, GIS was revamped and became Fairbanks Best. And at that time, Best began issuing reimbursements to families through an allotment-style system. And so they'd build ILPs, they'd get reimbursements. However, it was pretty regulated, much more so than now. But they still got reimbursements, they would build their classes, and it was similar to what they're doing now. In October of 2015, Fairbanks Best became an official statewide correspondence program. And from 2015 to current, Best has operated using individual learning plans and allotments and has functioned in the same way as the other competing statewide correspondence programs in the area, paving the way for Best to become a leading choice for homeschooling families in our community. And one of the things that I really want to emphasize is that some of the programs in the community have been here longer than the district has had their guided independent study program, so for longer than 53 years. But in this short period of time, so from 2015 to current, we've been able to build from a very small, small program of like maybe 200, 250 students to over 1,000. So we're, we kind of are sharing a similar size of the market to the other correspondence schools in the area. So I'm really proud of that and I think that we've really built a robust homeschool program that I hope that we can continue building on and we're really proud of that. So at Best, Best stands for Building Educational Success Together. And so we're committed to serving families from all kinds of backgrounds. So I think people have this idea in their minds of what a homeschooling family is, but the truth of the matter is, is it's all kinds of families. We have a wide range of students that we serve from kindergarten through 12th grade. Each of them has their own set of needs, their own set of goals, aspirations, their own set of situations. We have students that are sort of that traditional sort of homeschool family. We have students who come from backgrounds that are more challenging. We have homeless students that we homeschool and we work with. We have students that are coming out of SMART and need extra support as they're making the transition to go into regular school. We have students that maybe they don't have enough credits to go to CEC, but they're still trying to see what they can do to try to graduate. We have students that maybe suffer from a lot of anxiety and they just can't get into the place where they need to be to be able to go to a brick and mortar school. So it's not just one kind of student that we have attending Best. It's a myriad of students and we work really hard to work with each of those students to make sure that they find success, to make sure they're comfortable, and to make sure they're ready when they are at that place that they want to go back into a brick and mortar school or if they want to stay homeschooling. And that's what they choose and their family chooses. We're proud to have supported many high achieving students who have continued their academic journey at prestigious universities like MIT, Brown University, the University of Pennsylvania. We have many of those kinds of students and we are so proud of them, but we're equally proud of our students who need a second chance at finishing high school, which we have many of those, and are taking a different path to graduation. I myself cheered just as much for the students that need that extra year to graduate and they find that success. Our dedication extends to all of our students, including those who may be facing challenges in completing their graduation requirements or those in need of additional support and guidance. And we're all, all of us that work there, we're devoted to providing personalized attention and ensuring each student receives the necessary resources to succeed. So we're all there with them, working hard to make sure that they're getting what they need, finding what they need in the community, reaching out to different agencies, resources, tutoring, whatever it might be, we're there to support them. So ultimately, that's what we're committed to doing. We're meeting families and students right where they are at any given moment and providing a flexible supportive environment that will really give them what they need to reach their full potential. So as far as our enrollment, considering our relatively young age as a fully functioning homeschool, Best has seen extraordinary and sustained growth in enrollment over the past several years. Now, this data was as of 4/29. It fluctuates really, although we've kind of, I think, well, I think, I don't know what it is today, but as of 4/29, it was 1,027 students with approximately 339 in elementary, 230 in middle school, and 460 in high school. Right now, we have four full-time certified teachers that work with families and students and then one head teacher, which is myself. And I also work with families and students and I also work as the Administrative Head of Best Homeschool. I will say that we are all stretched very thin right now, so we're very, very busy. There are also two administrative secretaries, one program secretary, and one vacant tutor position. And then we have two more full-time teachers that will start in the fall of 2024. We expect our enrollment to continue to trend upward. When you look at all of the statistics statewide and also nationally, homeschooling is increasing at a solid rate. It's the fastest growing segment of the education sector in the country and it's just more and more people are choosing to homeschool. And I feel that that will continue to be the case and I think we'll see that in our enrollment. Some exciting things that have happened for us recently, I think moving into, from our small office that was in this building, it was lovely, but it was very small and cramped, to our bigger home in the Nordeale Education Center was fantastic. It really opened up a lot of things for us there. We now have a larger variety of weekly program- programming that brings families into Best. We're able to do Lego Club, we have sewing, we have open gym twice a week or more, we have socials, we're able to have art classes twice a month, we offer just some general classes like CPR, music classes, all kinds of things. And then our Best students regularly participate in competitions around the district and state. We're very proud of that. We've had students that have placed at State in Poetry Out Loud, Science Fair, our students have competed the last two years in Science Olympiad, which is very exciting. They do Up with Art, Battle of the Books, they've done very well in all-state music, solo and ensemble, all of our, I mean, not all, but many of our students do athletics and do very well. Acadaca is a big one, High School Science Symposium, and many, many more. And of course, we're very excited because just this last week, we were named a Purple Star School as a recognition of our support for our military-connected students and families because we do serve a large segment of military families as well. And so sort of as we're thinking ahead for our school, our short-term goals include expanding our parent advisory committee. We are getting more parents to join and they are more committed to creating a stronger committee. And I'd really like to be more of a self-organizing group, that's my goal. Continuing to grow our Best Fest, so we started this sort of curriculum fair and we really wanted to be more of a, so not just a homeschool thing, but like a community-wide fair that focuses on local vendors and educational partners in the community so that everybody can come and join in, whether you're homeschooling or not. If you have children that like activities and you want them to do activities, they could come and see what's available in the community. Expand a catalog of our, our catalog of activity offerings for students with more activities being organized and run by parents because there's only a few of us, but there's many of them. One thing I really want to work on is our own NCAA approval for our Acelis courses, partnering with a school such as North Pole High School, that's one we're working on, and others to offer microprudential courses to students for like CTE-type courses. And then just building our brand awareness locally to bring more students into the district from competing district homeschools. So really trying to get students who are attending other homeschools that are in other districts and getting them back into our district. And then long-term, I would like to build on our statewide correspondence school status and expand into other markets such as NANA, Delta, and more. And just some pictures to reflect on what homeschooling with Best looks like. So you can be doing Science Olympiad, you're out doing PE, hiking, doing art, going to the mine, hanging with cool musk ox. Really, anything you could want to do what homeschooling looks like. All right. Well, thanks for listening to my presentation. Yes, next.
President Hardy, would you like us to do questions after each one or save all questions until the end?
I figured we'd do questions in between. Okay, that's kind of what we discussed. So Ford, if you have questions. Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. I have one that might be to Administration and one definitely to Best. The first one is how do you or foresee the correspondence changes impacting, sorry, impacting the enrollment trend? Because you said it's gonna trend upwards, but I'm curious if there's any talk about that changing due to the change.
There is talk about, man, these mics are tough tonight. Let's try that. So yeah, the, I think it's a good question. You've heard me say this before. Right now, we're in an unknown status in terms of the impacts on Best. The legislature has a couple more weeks in the session and they're looking at a legislative fix in terms of the court's decision in terms of ruling part of allotments unconstitutional. And so that could certainly have an impact on Best. What those impacts are at this point in time, we're not entirely sure. We do have approximately 300 students that are duly enrolled in private schools. But I think it's important to note, just as Principal Candelaria was talking about, that each of our students are individuals and they each have individual ILPs. And so even our students that are dual-enrolled in a private school don't come over in a nice tidy, you know, bundle and says, like, okay, they're all using it to pay for courses at their private school. That's not, that's not the case. And so we'll have to evaluate determining, like, depending on whatever the legislative decision is or court's decision to give us more clarity in terms of what the guardrails are in place. And then that, at that point in time, we'll go forward and see what those possible impacts are. I think in the short term, there could be possible dips in our enrollment from what it currently is now at, you know, over 1,000 students. But I think we're right on long-term in terms of thinking about homeschooling continuing to be a popular option for parents and being positioned to provide those services for students and families.
May I follow up? Thanks. Correct me if I'm wrong, the Supreme, no, Superior Court?
Superior.
Superior Court stayed till June 30th?
That's correct.
So what is the plan for our district post-June 30th? If we haven't heard from the legislators?
Yeah, I'd like to wait to see if the legislature comes up with a fix before publicly saying what our plan is.
Sounds good.
I think it's premature to put that out there.
Okay. And I have a very easy question, if I may. Okay, you mentioned one of the goals is to obtain your own NCAA approval for Acelis courses. What are Acelis courses? Told you it was easy.
Acelis is just one of the platforms we use. So it's sort of our, our online platform we use for courses. And so a lot of our NCAA, hopefully, I can't hear if I'm on there. Hopefully, our, I mean, a lot of our students use another Acelis that's outside of our, that's outside of Best, called the Acelis Academy, but it's much more expensive for them. And we have our own sort of in-house Acelis platform that we can use. And it's nice because we have more control over it. And so if we can utilize that and get our, be able to use it for NCAA purposes, it would be very advantageous for us because I think that we would garner a lot of support from more NCAA students because we'd more easily be able to utilize that with them and it would be a lot easier for us as well. Like NCAA approval, meaning like NCAA courses have to have certain, there's certain requirements for an NCAA course. Like you can't just take any course. Like it has, there's certain things that have to be in place for it to be approved.
May I follow up? Is NCAA National Collegiate Athletic Association?
Yes.
So these are, these are sports classes?
Correct. Well, they're, they're not sports classes, but they're for students who want to go to a Division I or a Division II college.
Oh, so they could take these, they would, they would count towards an NCAA-type scholarship?
Correct.
Ah, good. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Ms. Burnett?
Two questions. First, I, I see it says we've got, what is that, 1,027, I have to scroll up. Have we seen a dip in enrollment since what's come down with this correspondence school thing at all?
We, we see re-enrollments and new enrollments every day. So we are constantly bringing students in. And up until probably a week ago, two weeks ago, we had to, like, say, we're so far into this semester, we cannot take any more students because there, there's no way anybody could finish. Because at this point in time, a lot of our kids who come in are ones who have not been performing out at their, their schools, whether they're within our district or another district or another homeschool. There's no way that we can save them at this point in time. We'll, we'll tell them, we'll, let's give you one class, two classes, and see how you like it. And if it's something that you really want to do, stick with us in the fall where we can get you back on the right track.
That's excellent. And then I just wanted to comment on the NCAA thing. I have a son who's taking Acelis Academy, so I just fully support whatever we can do to get that through Best because that'd be amazing. I mean, you know, just speaking from my experience, we pay over $700 a year for Acelis Academy. So that would actually be very beneficial to our district to be able to have the NCAA recognition. It's needed for scholarships, any child who thinks they want to do anything collegically for athletics, they've got to have those NCAA standards.
Mr. Burgess?
I'm just curious if you know how many students are enrolled that are not geographically located within our district? Any?
I don't have a number for that. I could look it up. But I would say the majority are enrolled in our district. We don't have very many that are outside of our district in terms of statewide. Like, that's, that's why I would really like to expand.
The last time we looked at that, it was under 10. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Doran?
Just while we're still on near, nearby the NCAA approvals, because, do these Acelis courses, I'm trying to think, we, we've got a lot of courses in our district that are NCAA-approved. So what's the interface between Best offering those courses, whether it's through Acelis or other platforms, and already being an approved NCAA? Or is that, because I don't believe, I think that's district rather than school by school?
No, it is school by school. So each individual school has to work through the NCAA clearinghouse process and submit syllabuses for each individual course at that school. And so that's where Best is coming into play with Acelis and ensuring that those courses are NCAA-approved for Best. Now, the nice thing, if they go through that process and other schools within our district also want to use Acelis courses and have them be NCAA-approved, we now have a template that one of our schools has done that could then easily be lifted and applied to, to other schools. So it's an easier lift, school by school, but it is a school by school application process.
All right, continue. Okay. You talked about the expanding parent advisory committee and as referenced in a couple of spots. Could you explain a little bit about what the role of that is and what I have in mind in comparison between, between that for Best and a APC for a charter school? So what's the role of the parent advisory for, within Best?
Parent Advisory Committee just serves as kind of like, we meet once a month and they kind of guide us on what, it's very casual. It's like, what kind of activities would you like to see? What do you think we should be doing? They're certainly not commenting much on curriculum or, or anything like that. It doesn't have like a supervisory role like you would see in an APC. It's more of kind of, you know, where do you want to see Best going? What kind of activities would you like to see Best doing? How could you get involved with maybe helping with various things that you might like to see happening at Best? So it's, it's a little bit different. I would liken it more to maybe like a PTA versus an ABC.
I'm gonna put myself in the queue if I have more people. So I was thinking about testing and all this stuff with correspondence happening and the question arose, do correspondence and Best students take the NAEP test?
We have, not since I've been there, we haven't done the NAEP test.
That one's the one where you get selected. And I just wasn't sure if they ever, we, it's the one that keeps being used to talk about how students in our district do.
Yeah.
And our state do. And I just wasn't sure if correspondence students were included in that.
We haven't been selected. I don't know if ever.
And I might work with other correspondence schools in the state. They have not been selected in the past either.
Interesting. Can I ask one more and not cut people off? Okay, and this is my last one. Could you tell us a little bit more about what an average day would look like for one of the teachers at Best and what that workload looks like? We get a lot of questions. Why do these teachers need, why do we need so many Best teachers? So it'd be good for the public and also our own information.
Sure. So an average day is, I mean, it kind of depends on the season because there's different needs depending on what's happening. So for example, right now, it's the end of the year, so we are in a frenzy of, with our seniors, making sure they have all their credits. We're also following with families to make sure that they have all of their grades done, answering all of their questions. We also are starting our enrollments for the fall. So it's a lot of answering emails, answering phone calls, making phone calls, already setting up enrollment meetings for the fall. And so this pretty much goes on all day, every day. In addition to running our various clubs, we each pretty much have at least one or two clubs that we do.
You talked about the expanding parent advisory committee and as referenced in a couple of spots. Could you explain a little bit about what the role of that is? And what I have in mind, a comparison between, between that for BEST and an APC for a charter school? So what's the role of the parent advisory for, within BEST?
Parent Advisory Committee just serves as kind of like, we meet once a month and they kind of guide us on what, it's very casual. It's like, what kind of activities would you like to see? What do you think we should be doing? They're certainly not commenting much on curriculum or, or anything like that. It doesn't have like a supervisory role like you would see in an APC. It's more of kind of, you know, where do you want to see BEST going? What kind of activities would you like to see BEST doing? How could you get involved with maybe helping with various things that you might like to see happening at BEST? So it's, it's a little bit different. I would liken it more to maybe like a PTA versus an APC.
I'm going to put myself in the queue if I have more people. So I was thinking about testing and all this stuff with correspondence happening. And the question arose, do correspondence and BEST students take the NAEP test?
We have, not since I've been there, we haven't done the NAEP test.
That one's the one where you get selected. And I just wasn't sure if they ever, we, it's the one that keeps being used to talk about how students in our district do.
Yeah.
And our state do. And I just wasn't sure if correspondence students were included in that.
We haven't been selected.
I don't know if ever.
And I might work with other correspondence schools in the state. They had not been selected in the past either.
Interesting. Can I ask one more and not cut people off? Okay, and this is my last one. Could you tell us a little bit more about what an average day would look like for one of the teachers at BEST? And what that workload, workload looks like? We get a lot of questions. Why do these teachers need, why do we need so many BEST teachers? So it'd be good for the public and also our own information.
Sure. So an average day is, I mean, it kind of depends on the season because there's different needs depending on what's happening. So for example, right now, it's the end of the year. So we are in a frenzy of, with our seniors, making sure they have all their credits. We're also following with families to make sure that they have all of their grades done, answering all of their questions. We also are starting our enrollments for the fall. So it's a lot of answering emails, answering phone calls, making phone calls, already setting up enrollment meetings for the fall. And so this pretty much goes on all day, every day. In addition to running our various clubs, we each pretty much have at least one or two clubs that we do. So that's kind of an, an all-day thing. And then over the summer, we just meet, mostly it's meeting with families as they set up their enrollments. And then just kind of prepping for the next year, we start working on our rollover with Acelis and building that catalog back up and thinking about how we're going to set up for the new year. And then starting in July is where we start really a lot of meeting with families for enrollment again. And so our meetings pretty much go from morning to afternoon for about, I would say, a month and a half, where we're meeting with families all day long, every day. And then it kind of slows a little bit. And then we kind of get into doing our clubs, our art classes. But we're still following up with emails. We reach out to families at least once or twice a month or more. We, it's, you know, it just depends on what's going on. But it's a lot of family contact, following up with families and multitasking. So it's hard to give you just a one day, this is what I do from this time period to this time period. But it's like a, a constant barrage of just different things happening all at once. But it does, you do get pulled in a lot of directions. And there is just a lot of things going on that pull your attention and need your attention. And it's just really busy, especially at quarters, at the end of each quarter, whenever we have a new enrollment period. So like in January, December, at the start of the school year. And then like at the end of the school year, when people are starting to think about the next school year.
So their events are also into the evening, when she says we have clubs or whatever. A lot of those clubs or, or events are in the evening. So they, they have to flex their calendars a little bit so we can cover those evening events, Saturday events. Like you saw, last Saturday, we were at Pioneer Park. And that was, all the teachers that we have that are working, they were all there covering it. So it's, I mean, it's not a typical nine to, nine to three or whatever.
Right.
It's, we have, make sure somebody's there in the morning at 7:45 and we make sure somebody's there until 5 o'clock. So it's, it's rotating a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And their parent meetings that they have are approximately 45 minutes to an hour and a half, depending on the parent needs or family needs.
Or two. Yeah, I have meetings that they go on because, for two plus hours, so.
Just one follow-up, because you mentioned that you also run things in July. So is there 12-month staff for BEST as well?
Our secretaries are 12-month. I'm 12-month, but our teachers are on the regular calendar. So we pay them to come in. And if they, if they can, they'll come in and work. And we pay them on an extended contract. But there's no, there's no written in stone, yes, you have to work these hours. So they're, they're a very good team of people who flex their time and, and their hours to make sure that we have at least two people over the summer there. And then they, I mean, they work so well together that they say, I'm going to be gone for these two weeks. Who else, who's going to be here? Who's going to be gone? So they can make sure that the office is covered because there are a lot of re-enrollments over the summer.
Yeah, because home, yeah, homeschools all year. It's not, you know, within the nine-month school year, so.
Mr. Doran?
Sticking a little bit with some of the testing data. And I do want to make sure I get in, I sent a lot of questions this morning. And I know I got a lot of answers and some rather specific information, which I really appreciate from BEST on short notice. And maybe those could be shared through the chair with the, with the whole board if that information, if wanted. But on the Alaska Star, we talked about NAEP, so Alaska Star. And I was very pleased to see that actually BEST has one of the highest, higher percentages of participation in Alaska Stores at 19% for 2023. So for this year, what are you seeing in that participation? And are there things that we could be doing to actually get a better read on how students are doing by the statewide data that's being used regarding schools?
Well, we've been really trying to get the information out there about testing. We all work really hard at emphasizing to parents how important the testing is. And especially, I mean, the AK Star, yes, it's really important, but also with the MAP testing. We try to educate our, our parents on how that can really help guide their, you know, teaching of their children to kind of give them an idea of where their children are at and where they can grow. So we've been really trying to educate as much as we can our families on that. It can be kind of tricky because, as you know, some homeschooling families are not that interested in testing. But we continue to try to do that. We really push that out there. So that is something we're always thinking about. And it is important to us that we try to, to increase that. And I think it has increased, as you mentioned. So as far as like specific things we've done, I mean, I think we're just, we just communicated a lot and early to really get them, as far as incentivizing it, I don't think we've, not recently, we haven't really incentivized anything. But, you know, I guess we could, I don't know.
Ms. Burnett, a little follow-up, and then Ms. Burnett?
In asking that question, I do want to make it clear that I have seen some of your advertisements and stuff and encouragements out to parents. And it's partially, you know, your efforts doing the best you can, but the state has said that it is optional and parents can decide not to. So my point in asking is to help inform us because we don't have a real comparable measure of homeschool students across the state, which the average is about 15% participation. So I, I want to really commend BEST for, with their parents of seeing a little bit higher return on.
Ms. Burnett?
I just wanted to kind of speak to what Ms. Candelaria is saying. I get the emails and they communicate consistently about testing. And in my opinion, it's almost like, how can you miss it? So it's, they do a great job.
Mr. Doran?
Just a thought, if you could talk a little bit to the comment about we expect enrollment to continue to trend upward. We do know, you know, I'm well aware that statewide and nationally, there's, there's a lot of interest. But could you elaborate a little bit more on that from your perspective and actually being involved in it? Because I know there are also greater growing conversations across the nation on homeschoolers who want to be connected to something or who truly just want to homeschool. And I'm looking at that long-term trend. If we do see a little drop, but I'm trying to get a sense, especially as moved to strategic planning, its impact on our in-person schools. And if the trend for homeschooling shifts, which we, we saw a great, especially post-pandemic, going one way, but tremendous growth, but that can wear off and start, you know. So if you could give a little more information on that.
Well, my assessment of that is just based on the data that I've read and also just journals that I've read that have indicated that that's sort of, you know, where things are going just nationwide. And sort of just where the national sort of attitude is with education. I can get you some specific articles that you could, that you could look at, that, you know, at a later time. But as to why that is, I, I don't know. It could be related to COVID and the pandemic and people just having sort of this changed idea of maybe what education looks like and feels like to them. And, but that's just, you know, what I've read and what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing when I talk with people. I mean, a lot of, a lot of my experience is anecdotal, just based on my conversations, not only with families in BEST, which obviously they're already homeschooling, so that's their feelings, but also with friends in the community and other people I know. So, but also, like I said, with scholarly articles and things like that that I've read, I'm seeing the same thing. So I can share that with you.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
In terms of students who are joining other extracurriculars at their neighborhood high schools, I understand if it's a student from outside the district, there is a fee for that. But I'm just trying to figure what's the impact on those local schools? And this might be an administration question, to try and accommodate all those students? And do they get qualified where those stu, those schools would get some of the, the small amount of per-student, student activity allocation? So I'm just trying to think that impact back to our local schools.
So a lot to unpack there. The, so you're correct in if there's a homeschool student that is not homeschooling with BEST, that there's an activity fee that covers the district not receiving any kind of revenue for that student. One of the perks of BEST is that there's no activity fee to participate in high school activities. And they can participate at high school activities at their home attendance area school if BEST isn't offering that activity. Additionally, BEST allows middle school students to participate at middle schools at their home attendance area school as well for activities, which outside homeschool programs do not have that benefit at our middle schools. In terms of activity, I guess the SAS funds we allocate to schools, there's not necessarily a transfer from BEST to individual schools to offset some of those fees. But conversely, you know, we don't take back SAS funds if, you know, West Valley comes under an enrollment projection for that year either. So it usually, I think, comes out in the wash, but, you know, that's something that we could potentially look at in the future of, there seems to be big impacts. We did just allocate more funding for schools in terms of activities at the high school level because of the X factor being increased through the negotiated agreements with FEA.
My last question at this time. My understanding, there's an allotment cutoff date. And so I'm interested in the impact, what, what that date is and the impact where we've seen tremendous growth ongoing during the year, which does benefit us potentially for the following year, but how we handle that. And I'll link into that a little bit, the conversation about the workload for teachers. And at one point, our governor suggested that we should all go to correspondence and we could do one teacher to 250 students. You're kind of at that right now. But if you could address those two things, because one complements the other, especially as the load continues to grow during the year.
I'll address the, address the allotment questions and then I'll let Ms. Candelaria address the, how that load is. Because she is one of those that it affects. Our allotment cutoff is October 1st or a couple of days after that. It depends on what the, what our 20-day count dates are, because we go by that. After students come and it's, we'll say November 1st, the students we give, we have lots of free curriculum that they can have if they want textbooks, if they want paper stuff. We have, our library upstairs is full of instructional materials that they, that they can have. We have e-learning that we can put them in, which is free for them. We have Acelis, which is, we have a district-wide license for that, so then they can use that for free also. There are other things that they, that we give parents, here's some guidance. You can choose to use these. And then they kind of tell them, this is what this would cost you, this is what this would cost you. And parents work with their ed specialist on coming up with a plan that is free or affordable to our parents. And depending on if they have any special needs, if they're special ed, then we help them with that material. If they're A and E, we also use that. If they're McKinney-Vento, we ask for some resources to help cover that. So it really is individualized on what the needs of the student are, what we have available to us and what we can use through the district.
Yes, clarification, just so I understand. So you gave me an October 1 and a November 1 date. October 1 is before the count.
Yes, October 1, no, I said, for example, if they came to us, November 1st. So if they came to us after October count, when there's no more allotment, those are the things that we can do for them.
Okay, so the last day of the October count period is really the deadline for getting an allotment. So there are other resources they could access.
We say October 1st or whatever it is, it's like a week window of time, whatever that first week of, whatever that first week is of the, of the account. That's when we give them the deadline.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the second part of your question?
I was curious, as the enrollment has increased this year and in addressing the workload, and I was using the example that our governor has used of 1 to 250. At 1,004 teachers, you're, in that area, there's four and yourself a little bit for a part of your time. So it's a little bit lower. So I'm just trying to get a handle on what, how realistic is that number in terms of a workload? Or, I mean, I know we always, we would like lower. There's no question about it, every single class, but.
It, it would be, it would be tight. I mean, is, is it realistic? 250 students to one teacher? It would be pretty tight. I mean, I'm not going to say like it couldn't be done, but it would be, it would not be, in my opinion, it would not be the best service that you could offer your families. Like you would not be able to give them the same attention that you could go if you have 150. Yeah, or 175 even, which is about probably what they have now, 175 to 190 each. Because I have about probably 90 to 100 myself.
Okay, so about the same load as a secondary teacher has, except that you're working with, with families instead of having students?
Yeah, I have, I guess I have about, yeah, I have about 100 plus, I have the dual right now, so. So 250 would be, I mean, if we're supposed to contact them at least, you know, once a month or more, plus all of the other contacts that we do, because it's usually more than once a month, right? Like we're contacting them and we're emailing and, so it, that's bare bones. I mean, that would be like, you, that would be equivalent to like a classroom of 40 students. I would say would be not an ideal situation.
Dr. Minor?
Thank you, yeah, I did want to comment on this. So I've heard the governor make those remarks, but for the board's awareness, other programs try to keep their student-to-teacher ratio under 150 with a lot of them in the 120 range. Homeschool programs do this because, as we know, in regular classrooms, the, the fewer students you have, the more direct instruction or services you can provide. And that's the same thing in the BEST space. And correspondence schools are very competitive. And so parents expect good service from their teachers and from their homeschool programs. And so while I would say maybe 250 is not possible, it is impossible to grow and expand if you have that, that many students, especially as we're entering this enrollment phase of new parents and families interested in the program. You don't have the capacity to take on that workload to be able to meet with those parents and let them know what homeschool education looks like. I think one of the misses for our district coming out of COVID is we didn't ramp up our staffing quick enough. And so we definitely lost out on the families that just couldn't get an appointment with a teacher. If they could have gotten an appointment with a teacher, then they probably would have signed on with BEST. But they didn't, so they went out to other homeschool programs. And I think the same thing happens. If we don't invest in BEST and we can't get to those families quick enough, especially during enrollment season, they'll go to other homeschool programs.
Thank you.
Not seeing any further questions. Thank you so much for that presentation and informing us about BEST.
Thank you for having me.
Next up, we have CEC with Craig Kind, who you all know is. Next up, we have CEC with Craig Kind, who you all know is retiring. And we have his, I won't say replacement because he's not replacing him, he's, he's, he's an addition. It's Mr. Wayne Haring, who I will let you guys introduce yourselves, but we have two wonderful gentlemen down there.
I'm Craig, it's Wayne. For Ms. Burnett's benefit, Ms. Burnett, just so you know, Boston's up 4-1.
You're not supposed to be watching.
I'm not watching, I just have it ready. I'll go ahead and turn it off right now. It's an anchor's goalie, you gotta, he's got 36 saves, he's doing really well. So I'm going to go ahead and I will do the bulk of the presentation. You know, Wayne is more than capable of taking over as head teacher next year, but we don't want to throw him in the deep end quite yet. So I'll do the presentation. And just to give you an idea, as I do this presentation, my plan is to add context to actually what was in the presentation. So if I skip over a specific fact you want to talk about in the presentation, feel free to ask. And you're more than welcome to interrupt me or wait for questions at the end. You know, I've been teaching for 22 years, I'm a parent, I'm used to being interrupted. So my predecessor, Mark Rippey, one of my predecessors, Mark Rippey, used to love to tell the story of how CEC as it is today came to be. CEC's name has been around for decades. It's, it, it has a long history going back and even into the 70s, something called CEC. We call it CEC rather than Career Education Center. It's just what we're known by, CEC. But Mark Rippey used to tell the story that in the late 90s, you know, people were looking at the lack of alternative education in the district because a lot had been, had been cut due to budget constraints. And so there was a community-wide meeting that, that looked at alternative education. And as he tells it, you know, one of the things that came up again and again in those meetings was, you know, why did you ever get rid of Fairbanks Alternative High School? And it was the one refrain that people kept talking about, because it was the one very specific sort of need in the community is, which is what do we do for these older students who really don't have other options? You know, when they get to that age where, you know, they're, they're getting close to aging out of school, what, what, what do we have to offer them? So CEC as it exists now started in the fall of 97, and it was specifically designed to be about older students. My philosophy has always been, you know, I like to refer to it as the last best opportunity to earn a diploma. And just to give you an idea of what that means, alternative programs across the country, there are very good programs, but then there are really questionable programs. And so the things that I always look at as sort of the guardrails, things we never want to be as an alternative program. We never want to be a diploma factory. We never want to be a place where students can just show up and, and leave with a diploma. And believe it or not, those type of places exist in the United States. But we also don't want to be a place that just hides students and protects graduation rates for other schools. We are here to serve students who really need that last best opportunity to earn a diploma. And we are not a place that sends students, you know, somewhere else in the district. If they don't succeed with us, the vast majority of them, they go on to the GED or they just go into the workforce. And that's how we're designed, and it's very specifically how we're designed as that last best option. We are designed very specifically for students who, you know, are older. And we do see ourselves as for students who are at high risk. But we keep our, our requirements for, for enrolling, for applying, we keep them general. We could be very specific, but one of the things I believe is that the vast majority of people never know they need an alternative program until they need an alternative program. And the last thing you want is for them to go looking for an alternative program and constantly get told no. And so we keep the requirements as general as possible. And, and you know, there are alternative programs that are placement programs, students are very explicitly placed in a program, that's not CEC. And then there are programs that explicitly have, you know, a qualification, you know, pregnant parenting students, things like that. You know, we are sort of a catchall, and perhaps one of the reasons we are a catchall is since 1997, you know, we've been here and other programs have come and gone. And so we try to be that catchall. And, and not sort of gear ourselves towards one particular student. But really just sort of set the guardrails again of, here are the extremes that we cannot serve, but we can serve a whole lot of people within that sort of, you know, that sort of middle, students who need us. We are, I always refer to us as a hybrid of a correspondence program in a traditional school. If you've visited, you've heard me say that before. We, we, we don't use technology, we are paper packets, we are a very straightforward, old school program. We are designed in a modular way like a correspondence program, like an online program. But teachers create all the materials, put together all the materials, they're the ones giving the materials, interacting with the students. So it's not a separate interface, they're working with us as, 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 you know, as students and teachers. And, and one of the reasons we always want to do that is, is as much as the academic part is important, actually the interactions with caring adults is what's even more important. So many of the students who come to us and seek alternative education are very, and, and parents, they're very disillusioned with the education system. And it's no fault of the education system, there's no way that, you know, we can serve in traditional schools the full range of students adequately. And so some are always going to be disillusioned. We want them to be able to come to us and have those positive interactions. Even if a student doesn't succeed by usual metrics and doesn't graduate, we want them to have had a very positive experience entering the world after they leave the district. So even if they drop out, the last memories they have are some very caring people. Rather than the, you know, the packets we give them. And so it's always about the people. We have five certified staff and one classified staff. We, we succeed because we all do a little bit of everything. There's no specific one thing that anybody does. You know, I always like to, if you've visited CEC, you know, the first thing everybody notices when they come in is they see the graduates around the ceiling. And, and we do that very intentionally, that we want students to be able to see that other students have come and succeeded and graduated. More and more these days, we're getting a lot of parents who come in and point to themselves as their student applies, generational. I don't know if we've gotten three generations, we definitely have had two generations. You know, we help our students graduate, we help other district students graduate. We have programs for non-CEC students, and that's one of the things we've been increasingly known for. Our focus has always been on graduation, but one of the things that I've seen in my time, this is my 14th year, is we've become not less and less about graduation, but we were very explicitly designed originally to get students over that last hump towards graduation. Students who got to 14 credits, that was the original requirement for CEC, 14 credits, so junior year. And they came to CEC to get over that final hump. We're at eight credits now. And it's not because we really feel like we can get those kids to graduation, it's just, it's what's needed in the district. Fewer and fewer of the at-risk kids are getting close to graduation. And so it's, you know, our graduation rate is never going to be great, never has been great, never will be great. And if it's ever great, you got a problem, because that's not what alternative programs are for. At least in my view. And so, but it's becoming even harder because students aren't getting close to graduation. We have an application and interview process. The whole idea of that application and interview process is that we know that CEC is not for everyone. We go into those, those interviews, we do an application followed by an interview. We go into those interviews with a philosophy of trying, we want to say yes. We're not looking for stu-, we're not, it's always interesting, when we had previously, when our counselor, former counselor would do interviews, he would come out and he'd be like, I don't know if we're going to get that kid graduated. And it's like, and we always had to remind ourselves, it's not about whether we think we're going to get that kid to graduate, it's whether that kid deserves a chance and the opportunity and that last best chance to earn a diploma, and that's what we focus on. And, and man, I mean, Wayne's been in interviews this year and he's, he's, he's got to see some really interesting interviews where you're like, I don't know if I see a spark in that kid, but we just look for anything, some little spark of motivation that we're going to be able to work with and help them, you know, get to graduation. We're not looking for successful kids, we're not looking for kids who are, who don't need us. But we're looking for kids who have some little spark. We accept them based on hope more than anything. And that's how it works. As some of you who've been here know that we used to be part of a charter school here in Fairbanks. One of the reasons we, we changed from being a charter is the nature of the student CEC accepts, when we accept students and, and how that doesn't fit with the charter school model. You know, one of the things we realized is that over half of our students every year, our new students every year, come after the October count. Which back when we were a charter school and our, 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 you know, our funding was entirely based on that October count, mad it made for some stressful times. And it also, for me, I just had to realize that that's not what we're here for. We're not here to say yes to students before October and then serve them all year. We're here to help students whenever they need us. And what we realized more and more is that students needed us throughout the year. And so we accept students throughout the year. In fact, I think we just closed our enrollment just like two weeks ago for new students. And then we're opening up our enrollment, what, next week for next year. You know, the whole idea is though that, that, you know, we have, you know, these days, we've been averaging in the 70 to 80 student range at a time. But students come and go on an alternative program for at-risk kids. Either we drop them or they drop out, they enroll, they, you know, we bring them back, it's constantly fluctuating. On average, we work, you know, over the last five or so years, we've worked with about 147 students every year. And, and about 90 or so of those are new enrollees every year. And I guess the one thing I always, you know, when we changed from being the charter school and whenever people ask me, you know, budget questions, the one thing I say is, as an alternative program with a strong focus on at-risk kids, we're, we're never going to pay for ourselves and we're never going to make any money, and I apologize for that. But that's not what we're here for, we're here to serve the students that need us. And if I could find a way to make you money, I would, but it's just not possible. And after 14 years, yeah, I can say that's just not going to happen. You know, we, we like to have the strong focus on high-risk students. You know, those of you who are familiar with Power School know that every student in Power School has a little dot next to their name. It's, you know, red for high risk, orange for medium risk and green for low risk. We're always shocked when we see a green dot next to a student. And typically, the only time we see a green dot next to a student is because they're new to the district and Ellis Ot doesn't have any data to say that they're anything else. It's just what we do. Now, one thing I will say is, you know, 82% of our, our students, you know, it really is, 82% of our students are at high risk. And then, you know, probably 1 or 2% are at low risk. Fascinating to me that sometimes those low-risk students, and this is one of the reasons why we don't have explicit criteria. Over the last couple of years, almost every time I've been shocked by a green dot, it's been for a pregnant or parenting student. That the student had a green dot and was doing fine, but that is what happened. Or homelessness is what happened, or mental health crisis is what happened. And the data just has not caught up to them. It's one of the reasons why we are very open in terms of our enrollment. Graduation rates, you know, you can look at our graduation rate, but you know, one of the things we are about is we are about helping those students who are not on track to graduate. We're explicitly designed for that. And so, you know, I looked at it a couple of years ago and just to see how it worked. And, you know, 27% of our students enroll after their fourth year of high school. So, you know, the biggest, you know, metric that is used by the state is that four-year graduation rate. You know, fully a quarter of our new students come after that metric, and, and that is by design. Ellis Ot has always, you know, he's always told me that, you know, we are the only school that sees its cohort of fifth-year students go up. Because we accept fifth year, we accept sixth year. As long as a student is still at age, you know, under 20 or, you know, was 19 at the beginning of the school year or, you know, 21 at the beginning of the school year for a student on IP, we're going to accept that student and give them a chance. That's just the way it works. We are designed to be different. Anybody who walks in our building knows that we're designed to be different. We are designed to be more like a, like a work environment, really an office environment than a school environment. I always say that if a student and a parent can find their way to our front door, we will do the rest. Because we are one big room, everybody's in there. When somebody walks in that door, every teacher, every secretary, every, every adult in the room sees that person. And we can tell when that person needs something, is lost, or even better, yeah, we can tell when that student is hiding. And is trying to avoid, you know, talking with us because they don't have something, or, you know, or they haven't been there for a while. And then we can adjust to that, we can react to that. We are that way by design. You know, 20 some years ago, the food bank built that space for CEC, explicitly designed for CEC. Interesting thing, food bank has never raised our rent in all that time. It's the same amount of money we paid back and, you know, I think it was, I don't even remember what it was before my time. But it's the same run we've always paid. The idea that we have is that, you know, we are going to, if you're an alternative program for younger students, you're always trying to figure out ways to adjust, help those students adjust to the academic environment. You know, you're always trying to get them back on track, you're trying to get their attendance back on track, you're trying to get their skills, you know, back on track. One of the things that, when you're a program that's designed to be the end of the road for students is we don't try to adjust the students as much as we try to adjust ourselves and adjust the program, so we take away any barrier. So if attendance is a barrier, we're flexible with attendance. If you can't find a way to turn stuff in on time, we don't give you dates or deadlines. If you're the type of kid who loses anything, we got a little cabinet where you're allowed to keep stuff. You know, if, you know, whatever the barrier, we find it. If your, if your reading skills are low, we're going to give you different textbooks. You know, if your reading level is so low, we're going to read out loud to you. And it's amazing how many of us can read upside down. So it's quite the skill in alternative education, being able to read upside down. We do have a small population, it's not a large group of people, but we have a disproportionate, you know, we have a lot of diversity with our population. You know, our students are older, three quarters of them are 18 or over, you know, we have a large number who are living on their own. We have the second highest A and E population in the district behind Debbie Cochran. We're considered to be a very welcoming place, a very welcoming place for, for students who just haven't felt welcome. And so students, you know, older students especially, students who thought they didn't have any place left in the district. It's amazing to me how many students who think if they don't graduate in four years, you have no options. We hear that all the time. You know, students who are working and not just working to, you know, pay for a car, but, but working to help the family, working to help when they're living on their own. We have a large number of, you know, larger percentage of students, queer students. Trans students find themselves very welcome at CEC. We don't make a big deal out of trans students, but we, you know, we know their preferred name, we know their pronouns, you know, we work with them. And it's a place where they're, you know, they just blend right in, they just walk in and, and, you know, students look up, see who's there, they go back to work. They don't feel that they're, you know, none of our students feel that they're ever on display, whether they're, you know, a parent, whether they're a student with medical needs, whether they're a student who's transitioning. And if there is a way at CEC that we will, that we can help a student, we will find it. CEC is known for creating classes just to help one student. COVID, you know, we used to have a very explicit attendance requirement across the district. COVID has kind of, you know, destroyed attendance, it's starting to come back. We literally bring work to students. If a student finds a way to get work done, we'll find a way to get work to them and pick up the work that's done. We have a rather large resource room in the back. We're known for, you know, people donate gift cards and other things that we give to students. We will find a way to help whatever the students need. One thing I would like folks to know is just how much over 14 years, CEC has changed. You know, when I started at CEC, like I said, you had to have 14 credits, you had to be 17 years old. You know, and, and one of the things we started to realize, and it was one of the most difficult things when I was just starting, is it's hard to say no to students who have no other option. And one of the things we started to realize is we were saying no to way too many students. And, and, you know, it, it's hard because you have a small staff and you have a small, you have a specific structure. You can't do everything and you always have to say on your mission, otherwise, if you try to serve everybody, you're going to end up serving nobody. But we have had a staff over 14 years that, you know, changed over time, but they were willing to find ways to change, to serve different students. And we have a really good relationship with district counselors who are very honest with us. I know that when I came over to CEC, one of the counselors looked me in the eye and said, Craig, you have to find a way to get more students into CEC. Thank you, Jeff Walters. And, and that has been in my head for 14 years, how to find more students, how to find ways to get more students into CEC. And, and we have changed. We've changed our enrollment criteria, criteria. You know, counselors have said, can you bring it down to this? You know, can you get rid of this junior or this, this requirement of being a second year junior? Can you do this, can you do that? We talk it through with them and we've changed over time. We've created programs to help other We've created programs to help other, you know, district schools. We have, many of you know about the intercession program. That's the June program we have coming up where we bring students in who miss a graduation. And that, but we created an intrasession program where we do credit recovery during the year. You know, the idea being, schools, even with the flexibility they have with e-learning, with other options, there's always gonna be tool, they're always gonna need tools to help kids get to graduation. And so we have found ways to help juniors and seniors graduate even if they're not CEC students. And it's, it's, it's been a recognition that, you know, if we can step up, we step up. As long as we can still find ways to serve the students CEC serves, we'll step up to do it. As moving, we move forward, obviously, you know, the biggest change is gonna be, you know, I am out of here. And it becomes Wayne's World. Wayne's World. Party time. Thank you very much. You know, whenever staff changes at a small alternative program, lots of things have to change. It's just the reality. When you're, when you're, at CEC, the English teacher is the English department. You know, things change when staff changes. And so we have changed. It's, it's, it's always an interesting puzzle when we bring in new staff, so that, you know, things will have to change. Things that the staff have already identified, they wanna look at, they wanna look at, are there ways that they can expand intercession offerings? Not sure what that'll be. And they also do wanna build on some initiatives within the district. One particular interest is on reading. We always adjust reading levels for students. Every student who comes in, we give a little, what I call it down, a dirty vocab test that gives us an idea of how well students read and we can adjust reading levels to different textbooks. But one of the things, some, the staff is interested is, is there's something more we can do with reading instruction to help older students. And so that is one of the things that has been identified. And, you know, it's just one of the things we do. The CEC finds ways to step up, you know, our, our special ed population goes up and down and up and down throughout the year. And Missy Gordon, who's our, technically our halftime sped teacher, has a sped load that's the same as any reg ed teacher. You know, we were seeing for years, ELL folks come in and try to, you know, corral our students to be ELL tested, tested. But we have two teachers who actually have ELL certifications. So they're like, hey, we can kinda save the time of those people if we take that on. So they took it on. Meaning that those ELL people are now free to serve other schools that aren't as flexible as us. So we find ways to serve the district, we find ways to serve the students. But overall, we just find ways to be that last best option for students to earn a diploma.
Ms. Maradi. Thank you for the presentation. Between the presentation and the email that you sent us, that I appreciate so much. You mentioned that Ellis Ott has the system of identifying at-risk students and that being a part of a bigger conversation. And so I'm, this for administration and President Hardy, can we have a work session or, or report from Dr. Ott on graduation specifically? I know that he does climate survey results and some other ones, but it does seem like it is our focus informally or formally for graduation, and I'm wondering if we can get a more detailed report on that.
Yes.
Cool. I have two more, but I can wait if you would like. Why don't you do one?
Actually, can I add?
Yeah.
I'm retiring. What are they gonna do, fire me? And I wanna, I just wanna point out one thing. This is, so I grew up in Wisconsin. Go Packers. I wish the Brewers were doing better, it wasn't good today. But in Wisconsin, Wisconsin has public law twenty-five, which requires every school district to identify, to identify every student in high school who's at risk of not graduating. And then every year, every school district has to create an alternative education plan. One of the things that's always interested me about that law, especially because it was implemented while I was graduating from high school, because I saw lots of interesting stuff in high school, with the things that were done with at-risk students, nothing that's done here. But it was interesting that they started with the students and they have to start with the students every year, identifying the students. And as much as I love CEC and as much as it's important to, to fend programs, at some point in time, if you're gonna look holistically at, at alternative education, and if you're having to make really tough decisions, you have to start with, who are the students? And what does the student need? And then you have to say, how is the student need being served and not served? It's gotta start with that need and that identification of the students.
Thank you. Maypole. I didn't actually read my own notes, I apologize. It does say, I think that your email specifically stated, I think it would be valuable to hear from him, Dr. Ott, on who is at risk and not graduating and why. So to be more specific, especially in response to what Mr. Kinda said too, is to get to that why and who. I know that we have the tools for the who. The why might be a more in-depth research project, but I think that that is equally as important as to the who, the identifying. Okay.
First, Mr. Kind, I wanna let you know it's five to one. Final. I had to look. Hey, Boston's the only one in the thing right now that I'm going for, is everyone's out. But my actual real question, big Swamen fan. Has CEC thought about or looked into accessing programs like Exelis for students? And I know that we, you guys focus on at-risk students, and I know not every student may have access online or computers, but I know there are those that do. Have we thought about programs like that, that we could introduce into CEC that would accommodate maybe more enrollment from students who are at risk of not graduating?
So, over time, we have looked at various online programs. So when e-learning started, we looked at it. Now, we do have teachers who do use like Google Classroom and things like that. There's, there are a couple of different reasons we, we do not. One is that the vast majority of our students come and, and they oftentimes complain about online learning and Google Classroom, and they really like the paper, they like the physical, that's what it is. In terms of, of, there are also certain other logistics of things we do. We are, we are not bound by semesters and we are not bound by years. And so our program, our classes, as we do them, carry over from first semester to second semester if a student is finished, carry on from one year to the next year if they're not finished. You know, when we've had conversations over the years about using online programs that the district offers, we always run into those barriers. We also run into a barrier, it's one that I truly hate, which is that if I wanna, we like our students to be able to say, this is not working for me. And then we drop them and put them in a different class, and the administration needs to close their ears right now, because I probably am not allowed to do this. But we don't put a WF on their transcript. Our students have low enough GPAs, most of our students have one and two point oh GPAs. And so I'm always bothered when, you know, we have requirements to put, you know, to, when a student drops out of a class, to give them, you know, a ding for that. Now, I will say this, I've been doing this for fourteen years and I've been doing it a specific way for fourteen years. I, there are new staff who are more technologically advanced than I am. Wayne is very technologically advanced. I've been the subject of many a meme by Wayne. So it might be something to look for in the future. Now, the question then becomes, is it to serve the CEC students or is it to serve other students? It really has to be focused on the type of students who are, who's, who need CEC, because that's what e-learning is for and is what best is for, is to offer those other things. If, if it would help the type of students who, who need CEC and, and, and have no other options, then it could be a valuable option. But the one thing I do know from my colleagues who do use the online stuff, is it's very few students who can, it, it tends to be a high confusion environment, you know, as a, you know, being able to navigate that. We always say kids are digital natives, they're digital natives on this. They're not necessarily digital natives on a learning platform. And so, you know, being able to hand them that one packet and they only have that one packet, there's a reason for it. But you can talk to Wayne.
Ms. Maple.
Leaning into what Ms. Maradi was asking about and the email that, that you sent that I also really appreciated, I've honestly read it like fourteen times. I keep going back, like trying to really wrap my head around all of it. And one of the things that I keep landing on is that it's, you know, a shift that we're, I mean, that lots of industries are, are trying to make sense of in being able to do things based on prevention instead of just intervention. And so I really appreciated actual information to look at of how we can shift that focus. And obviously, there has to be intervention also, but especially when we have this person on our staff, Dr. Ott, that is a data wizard and can help us make sense of some information, perhaps make more sense of it than we currently do. Or than I do, rather. I don't know collectively what the district understands. So, sorry, none of that's a question. And I just wanted to say that as, in my day job, I've employed a ton of young adults that are CEC students and watched many of them graduate through CEC. And so seeing the pieces about it, preparing students for the workforce, I have such a lot of firsthand experience with that, with really successful kids that have entered the workforce, completed their degree, their high school, gotten their diploma, and then moved on outside of, to, to better jobs than working for me. So thank you for all that you've done in your career there.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you. Yes. Really appreciate what you've given as a leader and as a team member, because that's what's there at CEC. And again, I'll add my appreciation for your perspectives that you shared with the board that are so germane to the strategic planning that will be taking place over the next year. And I will encourage you, if not implore you, to be part of that, engage in that conversation. And that maybe we can find ways to build on that as there are those in our community. So I wanna build a little bit on, and, and I will second what Ms. Maradi said and Ms. Maple about Dr. Ott and, and the information he has to offer to us. But what Ms. Maple was talking about too is the successes, and that's one of the questions I wanted you to talk a little bit, what you've seen as those successes. I happen to be in the right place at the right time to hear a gentleman talk about having graduated from there and what he was doing in the community and, and such, and what he was hoping for his family. And a lot of what you talked about is that the basis for what you do, what the CEC team does, is the personal relationships that go way beyond the, the, the particular statistics. So could you talk for a moment and help us to understand what that impact is to the greater community that students have gone through, have, have benefited from aspects of the community, of the contact with CEC?
I mean, I'm, I'm looking around the room and I, I see the career trees up here. And I think actually, one of my, my favorite things, developments that we've had over the years, is the, is the focus on career trees and this, this understanding that, there's, there's, I think all of us understand that for too long, we kept saying college and career ready, and what we were really saying was college ready, college ready, college ready. And, and I always, I, I recently, a couple of years ago, came across the idea of the three Es, that after high school, you wanna have one of the three Es. You wanna either be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. Whatever works best for you in, in sort of having a, a, a successful, fulfilling life, it's one of those three. It doesn't have to be one of them. And so I love the career trees because it, it has that idea that you, you find yourself a field, like, you know, my son's thinking about the health sciences and we're talking to him about, he wants to be a physical therapist and that requires he goes to graduate school. And I'm like, dude, can you really afford that? And do you wanna spend that much time? Or do you wanna look at something that just requires training? That requires two years, that requires a certi, set of certificates? Or do you wanna just go into the workforce right now and work in a medical setting? And I think what Ms. Maple was talking about with CEC students is, in many cases, they're very good workers. Some of our students have the worst attendance patterns at the traditional schools, but they have the best attendance on the job. They're very successful at it. And one of the things we always talk to them about is, that we always kind of go back to is the respect for whatever choice they make, whether that is going to college. And then we always talk to them, what do you mean by college? And then we find out that they wanna be a welder and go to college. No, 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 you don't have to go to college to be a welder. And then, you know, we talk to them about what college means, what CTC means, what going into the unions means, what going into the, you know, the air force means, what just going into the job means. I think ultimately, the success of CEC is, we have a respect for those individual students, where they're at, the challenges they deal with, but also the aspirations that they have. But we're also very realistic with them. We're very practical as well as aspirational. We sometimes joke, we're, we're, you know, we're reality coaches on the one hand and dream killers on the other. But really, what we are is, we respect what they tell us and then we help them work towards, you know, what that goal really is, what they really, what they really mean, what they really want. And it, it comes from that, those relationships. And I think that's the one thing I've learned. You know, when I started at West Valley, you know, I was very much a teacher. And now I'm very much an educator. And it's just, it is what it is. It's about the student in front of me. And, and, and we respect where they're at, the challenges they're dealing with, and we respect that they wanna get someplace and then we, we help them along that journey. But ultimately, like I always say, even whether it's a student who breezes through and succeeds and really didn't need us, or a kid who didn't get anything done and, and dropped out, my, my hope is that they will always have had a positive experience with adults in the school district. And those adults in the school district represent adults they experience and work with in, in the community. And that's what they take with them, is, is there are caring, respectful adults that they can work with and they don't go out there with a chip on their shoulder. I think ultimately, that's the success is easy. I don't know how you replicate that, though. Just is.
Ms. Maradi, then Mr. Doran. You mentioned a suggestion that Education Northwest made in 2021, after analyzing our district, to spend time deciding what the mission of alternative education actually is in Fairbanks. So question probably tomorrow towards administration and President Hardy, will this be a topic on our strategic planning agenda?
I can't say that it'll be a topic because the topics will come from the community. And so what I would say is, if you feel strongly and others feel strongly that alternative education should be a to, topic for the strategic plan, then that will bubble to the top. But what I will say is that regardless of if it's a topic of strategic planning or not, conversations in strategic planning will help shape the options and alternative options that we have. And alternative options are incredibly important for our school district and for our community. And I only see those increasing in the future.
May I increase? Oh, may I increase? May, may I respond? Sorry. I hear you and I appreciate that. And I wanna see our options grow. I think what I'm hearing, though, is that while they're growing, more of a systemic approach to organizing how that's happening is needed. And by including it in our strategic plan, we can, we can strategically create that system and more efficiently.
And, and I would say that work is well underway. It's a little outside of the alternative education setting today, but when we're talking about prevention, Ms. Gillum and I have had a lot of conversations about the freshman six and the importance of that strong start in high school so that the other end isn't as necessary for as many students. And so we have a lot of great options for our juniors and seniors, but if we can ensure that they get the freshman six and start stronger, that's work that we've already started and had conversations with principals about.
I have one more statement, but I can wait if someone else has something. I think Mr. Doran had his hand raised.
Thank you. I'm gonna hitchhike a little bit in preference to my question, that Ms. Maradi's question about the alternative options being part of the conversation, whatever works out in the plan at the end, but it's gotta be part of our conversation. And it, I think it addresses one of my major concerns with strategic planning. And that Mr. Kind rever, kind of referenced in his comments too, is that these are often the people we don't hear from, who don't answer surveys, who don't go to meetings, but that we make sure we have their voice, figure out a way to get their voice at the table and, and such. So one of the questions I wanted to come back to is the intercession. To get a little better handle of understanding, yes, I understand the intercession in June, but the intercession, how does that work during the year? And as you talk about that, if you could clarify if those... if those student graduates get counted into your graduation counts? Do they get counted into your enrollments where you're serving those, both for intercession and intercession? I want to understand how they count into your enrollment.
So one of my former colleagues says, tells me that one of the dumbest things I ever did was create intercession because it actually minimized intercession. Intercession has that great graduation at the end where you guys get to see all the graduates. It's very exciting. But by creating intercession, we actually decreased intercession because we helped those students graduate in May. Morally and ethically, it's what we wanted to do because, you know, the stress of a student not graduating in May is too much. If you've seen the conversations that counselors and principals have with students who don't graduate in May, Ms. Gillum's had many of those conversations. They are not easy. And so the more we can do to help prevent those conversations, that's what we do. So intercession is like intercession in that those students are never enrolled as CEC students. They always remain, in this case, a West Valley student. A student who graduates at the end of June in intercession is a West Valley student to the very end and gets a West Valley diploma. An intercession student who takes a class during the school year, a credit recovery class, always remains a West Valley student. And they're never counted anywhere in our enrollment. If you pull all of our classes, you would see it, but it's not, it's a, you know, those classes go in the system. As soon as a student finishes, we put in a grade and we pull it out of the system. They're not actually easy to see. What I can tell you is I actually, we just wrapped up intercession. We got our final kids who we think would be able to graduate, seniors done. This year for intercession, during the school year, we worked with 91 students from schools across the district. We had students from, most of our students come from West Valley and North Paul High. We had students from Lathrip this year. We had quite a few from Ben Eilson, and we had a few from Hutch. Hutch was unique because we had a couple of freshmen we helped at Hutch because some unique medical situations where kids had to be taken out of PE and we wanted to help them out. It's that fresh, it's that freshman six, whatever you can do to keep a kid on track. And the principal asked and we said, sure, we can figure it out. But 91 students we worked with, they successfully completed, or they, they, we created 100 classes for those 91 students. Eighty-four of them successfully completed the classes. Sixteen of them have not yet completed them. At least a couple of those are seniors where we already have applications for June. We'll see them. And other ones that just didn't finish. So actually, I was kind of surprised. That's nice math there. It's 100 classes, 84% success rate. It's not normal in alternative education. But yeah, the whole idea is that this is service to the district. It was something that came out of COVID when we were looking around during that first major COVID year. And we recognized that the failure rate was going to be high. And we decided that, you know, we, because we weren't going to have very many students, you know, it was going to be empty, that we could step up and figure out a way to offer these classes to other schools. We figured it out. We came up with a plan and then we got approval, and then we got approval to continue it. And so it's become a tool in the arsenal of counselors that it's, that they have this opportunity for their juniors and seniors to take credit recovery. If a student fails the class with a 40% or above, it's a little iffy because if you go into power school, sometimes a 50% isn't really a 50% because there are a lot of dashes. Sometimes a 35% is actually better than a 50% when you look at tests. Different ways of looking at it, but if a kid has a substantially, a substantial fail, weird term, I know, but a failure with substantial evidence of work completed, we will work with that and we'll fill in the gaps and get them to passing. They can get a D or a C. And then, you know, we find ways for them to finish those classes. And it's been pretty successful. It's very targeted. I don't know if it would work very well. I'm going to be interested to see how those two freshmen did with those PE classes. Because it's not something that necessarily we ever thought would work really well. It actually really only works because we have counselors who took on a greater role than I ever thought they would. We thought we would be working directly with students like we do with at CEC, but the counselors have chosen to be intermediaries. Like they hold on to packets and give them and they look at packets and they, you know, they serve as intermediaries. We have sped teachers and ELL teachers who have stepped up and said, hey, send the packets to me, I will help, even though, you know, Missy, our sped teacher, has helped us already do accommodations. You know, they have helped us step up. We've even had principals step up and deliver packets and stuff. It's worked really well because it's actually been a partnership that we didn't, we thought it was just going to be something we offered. And it's become a very, a very interesting partnership with those schools.
I had to follow up on that. Two pieces of clarification within that, and I really appreciate your explaining how that has grown as a partnership, piece in collaboration among schools. So if I understand correctly, where your enrollment average is about 147 students, but you're actually serving approximately another 100 or so, which is one of the things I think is important for us to be aware of. And then my, the question with it, clarification is, so some students come to CEC for intercession. And I'm thinking in terms of our best enrollment, we have some students who go to best and take a course to help them to go to graduation. Serving different, I'm thinking different needs of students, but if you could kind of address that. And I'm not sure where that stands, who is best to address it, but from maybe your perspectives.
Yeah, in terms of a credit recovery standpoint, is that what you're going after in terms of who's best situated to handle that? Just trying to clarify the question.
I'm not quite exactly sure whether it falls into credit recovery or credit completion, whichever comes first within that. But we have students who are completing.
Well, I would just add, this is where I would point out. So CEC is in a position to offer credit recovery where we already see evidence of an attempt at a class and then we can kind of fill in the gap. And we feel, we feel comfortable doing that. Every time you, you know, whenever, but like students who are trying to catch up on classes, like classes they've never taken before, that is much more an e-learning situation because they're taking the full class. Now, the way, in discussions we've had at CEC, there are circumstances where CEC could be interested in offering classes, where our differentiated materials for, say, sped students or things like that, LD students, might be of value in offering a full class. But it's one of those things where you have to be very careful with what you do because this goes back to the parameters of what CEC is. Back in the day, I remember when I moved over to CEC, I had been known as an AP teacher at West Valley. And so when I moved to CEC, there were actual parents who said, hey, send my AP student to CEC to get finished. That's not appropriate. It's not the nature of the work we do. It's not the nature of the work we require of students. We are differentiated to help students who struggle, students with reading issues. That's, that's where we meet the red face test in terms of the material we offer. We would never want to be in a position of being a shortcut to graduation for students who don't need a shortcut. And so that's where e-learning has always been valuable. But when it's that difference between like a 55% and a 60% passing and it's your senior year, e-learning, it doesn't necessarily, what we've been told, e-learning doesn't necessarily adapt very well for credit recovery so most students can be successful. That's what, that's why, that's why counselors say they come to us as opposed to doing. But in terms of that extra class they need, they go through e-learning. Or, you know, that's the primary place for a full class.
Or best.
Miss King, did you want to speak to that?
Sure. I think if they have, and I'm still trying to understand the total question. So if they have credit recovery or if they need, and it's one class of credit recovery or if it's a class they need to make up, or not make up, but just add so they can graduate on time, best is suitable for that. And that's, the student moves entirely to best. And if they, they might take a class or two at one of their, their homeschool, zone school. E-learning, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding of what e-learning really is. So this might be a good time to segue into what e-learning is.
I have Ms. Anderson waiting patiently to ask her question. So Ms. Anderson, she's online on Zoom. She's been listening the whole time and has been waiting. Ms. Anderson, could you turn your volume up? Ms. Marotti, did you have something while we wait for Ms. Anderson? You look like you were...
Yeah, be super quick. Mr. Kine, you said that you've done what you can to help those students graduate. And I want to assure you that you and your team under your leadership have not just done what you can. You've gone above and beyond that. You have helped students move mountains and you've changed lives. And I thank you, and I'm going to miss you.
Ms. Anderson says she's muted. I have to put myself in the queue real quick. So Ms. Anderson, feel free to interrupt if you get it working. Not so much a question along the same lines as Ms. Marotti, since this is the last time we're going to have you at one of these. So Mr. Kine, you were my teacher at West Valley in one of those AP classes. Your very first year with our district as a student teacher with Maida Buckley. And you made a difference in my life. And then you went on years later to make a difference in two of my siblings' lives. And they still talk about you, and they still talk about how warm and welcoming you made them. And they were students that were not successful in our regular schools. And I, later on, when I became a teacher, sent students from Hutcheson to you. And you have a long legacy, and CEC has a long legacy of helping students who are at risk find success and launch into their adulthood with having kind, caring adults. So, thank you. Last time. You can't, you can't retire without it. And you get to deal with it. And you're not coming tomorrow, are you? See? So then this is our opportunity. If Ms. Anderson ever gets around to it, we can bounce back. That would work. Ms. Anderson, if you want to text me your question, I could ask it for you. But I'm not seeing anyone else for CEC. And we can take a five-minute recess. Give people a minute. All right. We are back from recess. And moving on to e-learning.
E-learning currently, in the way that we use it, we have specific vendors that we use. EdOptions, Apex, Stride. We have a couple of teacher-created classes that are in Google Classroom. And the district is also using Elevate for synchronous type of virtual learning. E-learning is not, as it was being referred to earlier, the Acelis classes and just not, it's not all online learning for the district. And I think that's where some people get a little confused. And like, Best uses Acelis. They use North Dakota. They use Nebraska. They use all kinds of virtual learning, online learning. Those are not considered our district e-learning classes. And I just want to get that straight. Acelis is not district e-learning. Acelis is a different entity where, once a student signs up for it, they take the class all by themselves. There's no teacher interaction on the district side of things. Our e-learning, virtual learning, is we have, the students take the class in the e-lab out at the site. So if I was a student in e-learning, and I attended Hutch, I would be in their e-lab. There is a tutor in the lab where they can help them open tests, unlock tests, because we try to keep those things more, on the teacher's side of things, locked down where we can help the student as they go along. And it's a little more controlled than Acelis. They get in there, they go as fast as they can. Some students might finish in a month. Some students might finish in a year. It's with e-learning, we want to control that. And in most of our e-learning classes, there is a teacher on the other side who is the teacher of the class. And it is a district teacher for most of them. That teacher is there to help. They work weekends, they work in the evenings, and they grade the papers that are in, I'm trying to think, Edmentum is what it's called now, which is Apex. Edmentum bought out Apex. So now, when you hear people, those are just kind of the same thing. We are fortunate here tonight because we have two e-learning teachers with us. Ms. Candelaria and Ms. Beatty are both e-learning teachers. So if there were any questions on what the teacher wants to see, or what they see, what they're able to do, they're perfect people to ask or respond to those questions. E-learning is not something that we just want to throw all kids in. It is not something that, because it's available, we want to throw them in there. We want to be a little more specific about who's taking e-learning classes and why. E-learning is not for all students. I can't sit in front of a computer and take my class. I would rather have an instructor that's in person. E-learning is there to fill the gaps in some of our middle schools and our high schools where we either don't have the teachers to do it. We don't have enough students who want to take a particular class. So in order for them to take it, they all get into the e-learning class. We have, I'm trying to think, we used to have Latin, but Latin has now kind of gone away. So if you had a student who wanted Latin, they could take that through e-learning. Same thing with Chinese or, there were several other languages on there. But because those types of teachers are slowly kind of dwindling away across the country, and here, those options are not as available as they used to be. We have some AP classes that maybe there's only one student at North Pole who wants to take this AP class. E-learning is an option for that student. We can have them go into an e-learning class. And again, it's there to fill the option. We did have, at one point, lots of students who wanted to take Econ because they didn't like their particular teacher. That is not why e-learning exists. And we encourage counselors not to do that. And it is us working with the counselors and working with principals saying, these are the types of students that we're looking for. We're not trying to throw everybody into it. And we're not trying to take away from brick and mortar. We're trying to fill the needs that the schools need. So this is just a current enrollment of what we have. A total of, and this is about each semester, we have a total of 528 students. And that's kind of a breakdown for you. So you can see, we do have 14 full-time e-learning middle school students. And that is because these are students who started in e-learning in elementary when COVID was going on. And their parents have decided they want them to stay in e-learning with that teacher. The teacher that we have for e-learning middle school meets with her students almost every day. She has, opens up a Google Classroom. And then she takes turns with sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. And those students, if they need tutoring, they're allowed to come in and meet with her one-on-one for tutoring. She is very hands-on. And those parents do not want to go to Best. They do not want to go to the brick and mortar. They want to stick in e-learning because of the way that we provide that. So synchronous is what we have through Elevate. And currently, we have 21 math students, 44 world history, and 39 chemistry students. I have the schools that those are occurring at. And those are happening because we have lost a teacher. We were not able to fill it. Future plans for e-learning? We want to add more. And really, it's because we want to add more options. I'd love to add more teachers because currently, I'm going to use Algebra I as an example. We have, we only have so many teachers that can teach Algebra I because these are our teachers. I can't give one of our teachers 150 Algebra I students when during the day, they have their full-time job at teaching wherever they're teaching at. So this is their extra. We allow them 30 students because that's kind of where, over the last, I don't know, six or seven years, we have found that kind of is their max. We do have some teachers who have an easier class like PE or Health, and there's not as much grading. That person has, could have up to 45 students. So what we want to do, we want to add CTE. We want to add some more core courses, AP, a mixture of synchronous, asynchronous, and some more Google Classroom options. We did have a teacher this year who was working with us. And she created a Google Classroom that we're going to start next year for literature in Holocaust, or Holocaust literature. I forgot what she actually named it. But, so we're trying to work with our teachers in creating more curriculum and content. That's it for e-learning.
Ms. Maroti.
I apologize if I missed it. But can you tell me what the students not in a lab class means?
So we have some students who have had e-learning for maybe a year, maybe a couple of years. And if they have shown that they are successful in the lab and they don't need as much oversight, those students, and usually it's juniors and seniors, don't have to have that lab period. They just take an e-learning class during their extension. They might go in and take, that's where they take their tests. Or they make arrangements with the teacher, if they have an off period, to go in and take their tests, or if they need any kind of help.
Okay, thanks. And I have one more quick question, if that's okay. And the 14 full-time middle school students, how does that differ from other students?
So they have six classes all in e-learning. And they do not ever, unless, for whatever reason, they take an orchestra class, art class, or something, they're allowed to take two classes at their zone school. They might go there for that. But all their big content classes are all e-learning.
Why would, may I follow up? Sorry. Why would they do that instead of, say, Best? Or more, if they're basically a correspondence student, then what's?
Their parent has decided this is what they want to do. So it is very parent-driven.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Oh, and just a note, my daughter took several e-learning classes each year that she was in high school and loved it. And I'm a big fan of the e-learning program.
Thank you.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you, Doran. I want to note, too, that I've been very impressed over the years how e-learning has grown and the supports from the e-learning staff in the lab, call it as, in each of the high schools. So let me come back to the question that we were addressing just before break. If I'm a student who is trying to get to graduation, choice Best, e-learning, CEC, could you just explain what I'd be looking at?
So it really depends on where you're coming from, what your needs are. Do you need to have somebody who's going to be in front of you? Do you need to have somebody who is, here's a packet? Here's an online class? Here's, you're going to have more guidance from Best? And if it's only one class, Best is a full-time. So if they have to be a full-time student at Best. We do have a couple of part-time students, but those students are not already in the district somewhere. They are out-of-district students who are totally homeschool, independent homeschool. And they can come with us for two periods. But we don't have, where they are five periods at West Valley and then one period at Best. Does that help?
That's a surprise. Thank you. That's interesting. Okay. So let me ask you a question in terms of, like, the chemistry course, online. I'm not sure whether that's, I know specifically, this year, we had a class that was the only way they could do it because we didn't have a teacher otherwise. But there's a deficiency in being able to do experiments. Could you address that? And?
I can't address that because I don't know how they're doing their class for, you're talking about the Elevate class where they're seeing things on the end? So it's synchronous or asynchronous? Which one are you talking about?
I am not certain.
Okay, so.
But I guess what I'm concerned about, especially with science classes.
Ms. Beatty teaches the online asynchronous chemistry. So she can respond to.
Okay, that'd be great. Because I know that has been one of the major issues for any online science, especially science classes. But, okay.
Through our current program, they have what is called a dry lab. So they get all of the data that would take place in a hands-on lab. They get it available to them, and then they just have to disseminate the data. And then they have to come up, they learn how to write a report, a lab report. Is it the same as if they were in the lab? No, it's not hand-for-hand exchange. It's not the same thing. I do think the students, I try to grade my students accordingly. And when they schedule Google meets, I'm probably one of the few that still schedules Google meets with my students. And that was kind of a tag-over from being a full-time e-learning teacher. So I still do that with my students. That's when we have those really great conversations about what would take place in a lab setting. And that is especially important for students that are going on to the next level for science. Because if they miss that, then when they go to college, they're missing that key piece. So we do try to provide that. Students do have an opportunity in e-learning. If they need assistance from the teacher, they can email. Everybody doesn't have the flexibility in their schedule where they can schedule Google meets. But they do get that direct feedback from the teacher of that subject.
I'll put myself in the queue. Does e-learning also tend to lend itself to students who are wanting to graduate early? And so they're taking credits to get ahead of schedule?
We do have those students who do that. So they'll have their traditional sixth-perioded class. And then they'll take a seventh period with e-learning. So they can try to get those credits ahead of time. And then we also offer acceleration over the summer. So, and that's through e-learning also, where they'll take a class over the summer, again, working at getting ahead so they can graduate early.
Now, follow-up. Do we, all of that is free to any district students in their secondary that would want to do that? Or?
So during the school year, it is free. During the summer, it's, I believe it's $75 per class.
Mr. Doran.
This will be through the administration. The funding difference between Best and e-learning, I'm assuming, Best, right now, gets 90% and does not go through the multipliers. E-learning, I assume, is 100% and goes through the multiplier. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir. You're correct.
Looking at future plans, and it relates to one of the questions I asked in terms of the impact on attendance area of schools. It's a different method of learning. But I want to acknowledge that. And some kids do better in one place than another place. But I am concerned in terms of especially core courses, where we have those core courses being done. But that we draw students out, especially if we want to grow those options, which means drawing students potentially out of our brick-and-mortar schools. And then perhaps limiting the offerings that that school could offer because now you have, you know, students drawn in more ways. As opposed to, you know, going back to the why piece that you mentioned right at the beginning. So could you just talk to that sense of growing the program? But what is its impact on the attendance area of schools? What are the ripple effects we should be at least aware of?
Right. So as with any of our options, and again, we're not trying to take away from brick and mortar. We're trying to get those gaps. You might have a class that's only offered during a certain period. So the Singleton classes. And perhaps two of those Singleton classes are offered during the same period. So a student has to make a choice. I either have to take, again, I'm just making these classes up. I either have to take AP Psych or AP Econ because they're both being offered during the same period. If we have that available, one of those classes or both of those classes available during an e-learning, they can still take those two options. Only now, one of them will be in person and the other one will be through e-learning. So I don't feel like we're taking away, we're adding two. And they're still in their brick-and-mortar school. They're still getting the. They're still getting the, brick-and-mortar is still getting all the FTE for them. They're, that period, they're just in the e-lab, taking that class rather than there, because the student needs those two classes for their own, for whatever they want to take it for. I look at it as we're providing those options for students and not taking away. And again, it's us working with counselors and principals. We have many counselors calling us throughout the year, asking us why we're not offering certain classes, because they don't have them at their school, or their, their classes are full at their school. And it could be that because they're full there, they're giving priority to seniors or priority, priority to juniors, where if we're in e-learning, they can take it now, if they're trying to graduate early. There's, there's many, many reasons why they're taking e-learning. But again, we're not trying to take them all away. We're trying to give them those options that they don't have.
Mr. Doran.
I've, I've just got a couple. Just to make sure I'm up to date, at one point, e-learning, one of the emphasis has, was to have a teacher at one school teaching the class over the screen for several schools. I believe that went away, is that correct?
So back then, we called it distance delivery. And yes, that was probably six, seven years ago, because I think that was my first year, we still had.
Ten years ago, it was kind of started, we were building those.
Right.
Facilities. Okay, but that, and we've moved away from that, and now it's.
Can I add a caveat to that? So we have had, Ms. Gillum and I have had conversations with principals and teachers about distance delivery, and specifically in AP courses. One of the things that we want to make sure is that we have a robust AP offering at all of our high schools. And so while there might not be any courses currently being conducted via distance delivery, I wouldn't rule it out as an option in the future, because we really do want to have options and availability for our students, and specifically when we're looking at those AP courses, if it becomes constrained. Still giving, you know, options to like North Pole High, for instance. They don't have as many AP courses as West Valley might. And so a teacher might do the distance delivery, I'm sorry, to North Pole High, so that those students could take advantage of those classes.
Right, last question for this time. The middle school students, that's, you mentioned that was basically a carryover from enrollments during COVID, and they want to complete their, as they move into high school, do we assume that we will no longer have middle school e-learning classes? Is that what anticipation is, because there'll be different needs at that point?
We're, that is something that we will look at as we go. It's going to really be based on how, what the need is out there at that point in time. And like, I think currently, most of our students are in seventh, eighth grade. We only have a couple that are in sixth grade. So it's just kind of, we'll see where the needs are. And, and maybe by the time these sixth graders get into ninth grade, maybe their parents will be ready for them to go back to school, or they'll make the decision to move over to homeschool, but yeah.
If your question is if we'll have full-time e-learning for high school students, the answer is no. At that point in time, they would shift to best, or they would shift to in brick-and-mortar school and then have options to take sub-virtual learning classes.
Okay, and we're not looking to replace, refill in that middle school? We're just basically finishing out with this grouping of students?
Yeah, you know, we haven't made that as a firm plan, but I see that as the potential trend. I mean, 14 is certainly fewer than, you know, the big numbers we had after COVID.
Thank you.
I think that is all of the questions for e-learning. So next is Golden Heart Academy.
So with Golden Heart Academy, we have Trevor Pearson.
Hello. My name is Trevor Pearson, and I'm the head teacher of Golden Heart Academy, also known as GHA. GHA is located within the Fairbanks Youth Facility and provides an opportunity for students to continue their education while being detained. The Fairbanks Youth Facility is the second-largest youth facility in the state and serves the interior and the northern regions. The secure side of the facility is comprised of two units, detention and treatment. And so I answered an email today on this. And going into the facility is going, is going into a different world every day. And there's a non-secure side, where the JPOs are the junior probation officers and the state staff. And on the other side of the facility is the secure facility, that takes multiple keys to access and security clearance. And that is where the facility splits into detention, which I'm about to explain, and treatment. And essentially detention is for short-term stays, and treatment is for long-term stays, you know, up to two years. Detention is a 20-bed unit that serves as initial contact point for youth who are in danger of harming themselves or harming members of the community. The average stay is 60 to 90 days, although recent trends are longer due to the absence or overcrowding of appropriate in-state treatment programs. Detention is often flux, with residents being admitted and released due to circumstances outside of the control of the facility. Treatment, on the other hand, is a 16-bed unit for adjudicated male youth that have been committed to a long-term care for two years. There are four treatment programs statewide, and the Fairbanks Youth Facility has been designated as a neuropsych behavior unit. Unfortunately, the treatment program temporarily shut down in December, this past December, due to staffing shortages. At this point, treatment is set to reopen when fully staffed, that date is undetermined. They're about 50% staffed, so they have enough to staff detention and they're recruiting for treatment staff. The two units at FYF operate separately, as rules and policies are inherently different with long-term and short-term residents. I can't emphasize enough how safety and security are always the, the top priorities at GHA. In all circumstances, GHA must comply with safety and security policies set forth, set forth by the facility. Lockdowns and staff interventions are common, and small sizes are essential to the safety of both students and staff. Within this setting, GHA's mission is to provide an opportunity for those youth to reengage in their education. GHA offers an opportunity for kids to reset, rebuild their confidence, and connect with caring adults. Our hope is that the relationships built in our classrooms will give youth the confidence and self-control so they can do, not do harm to themselves or members of the community when they're released. Each member of our staff plays a critical role in student success and meeting the needs of our students. You can see our staffing numbers there. We currently have a math and science teacher, a history teacher, myself, and an English teacher. Those are our, our core areas. And we have an admin assistant, a reading tutor, and then a social services manager and a special education teacher that are provided by the district. This next shot provides a snapshot of our, our students. A big part of, of working at the facility is building a relationship with the state staff. And this, this quote that's on this slide is, was just one of my conversations. And to summarize the quote, these youth have very, very high ACEs scores, higher than, than I have ever imagined. Also, other, other patterns on this slide are transients. We're very diverse, and we have a high concentration of, of students with special needs. Other data not included on this is credit deficiencies, very low reading and math scores, and just a high level of transancy. Our students typically, I, I don't exaggerate when I say dozens of schools at times, where our staff is working together to try and dredge up, you know, where they were last, if they were in school, where their credits are. It's, it takes a, a staff, a team of staff often to find out just where they left off and how we can pick up those pieces for them. Oh, you, okay, I'm still on the pie slide. And the, obviously, we, we have very high sped number. This data is from five years. So we looked at our Title I spreadsheets from the last five years. We are very disproportionately minority-based, and we also have a very high sped population. Moving on to our enrollment, we have averaged about 60 students a year for the past five years. And the reality is, we are a, a community agency that serves an area. And we don't determine our numbers. As of, as of today, we had, we had three come into the facility, one over the weekend. So now we're at 14, we could be at 20 by the end of the week. So this, this varies very much. And the numbers for this year are 45, include, don't include treatment for half, half a year. I talked to the superintendent of the facility just last week, and we're in a, we're in a crisis around the state. We have students in detention. McLaughlin down in Anchorage is, is overspilling. And we have students waiting to, to go into treatment, and they have nowhere to go. A lot of them are going to out-of-state or are just in, in detention for a long period of time. And so as soon as we can get the treatment fully staffed, our numbers, our numbers should, should be at capacity. Some of the highlights of our facility. Depended on, depended on, on if treatment is up and running, and, and also dependent on what detention staff allows us to do, we can run any number of these programs throughout our year. The horticulture program in the summer, or the gardening program, the youth go out and they work in the garden, and some of their, their vegetables will go to Stone's Throw or the food bank. And they also bring pots on the facility, and they sell some of those, some of those flowers as some of the fundraising, fundraising opportunities. Usually during, during periods where they are not in school, such as winter break or spring break, we try and bring in different camps. We did a transition camp over winter break, which helps them get job-ready. We also brought in a professor from the university, and we did a dual enrollment, where they got some creative writing credit and also got some high school credit. And then this week off that they have between regular session and summer session, Department of Evoque Rehab is coming in and running an entrepreneur, a business week program. And so downtime in the facility is not good, we try to keep our kids busy. Summer school lasts for a month, and then we have different programs in July, and then we pick up again in August. And again, bike repair, you know, construction academy, first aid, small engine repair, these, these things are, again, dependent on who we have in our facility and, and if treatment is up and running. Teacher goals. We'd like to reopen the facility. We know that there are students in need. We've seen students remain in detention for a long time, and it's, it is detrimental to those students. Last year, they had some staffing issues, and they didn't shut down treatment, but they combined units. And so we saw treatment residents housed with, with detention residents, and that was difficult. So you had, you had 20 youth that were kind of on different programs, and they were together in the same classes. And it was scary at times. But the longer I am there, the more I realize how important it is to build a strong relationship with, with not only our students, but also the state staff. And, and we are, we, we are subject to the facility. And the facility does things in the name of safety and security, and we have to play by their rules. That doesn't mean we can't, we can't collaborate, but when it comes to those things, they are priority number one. We would like to, we have a fairly young staff as far as a history of working in the DJJ. We would like more safety training, and we would like to be more trauma-informed. And we know some of the trainings that the state runs do involve these, so we would like to actually participate with some of those. And we would also like to collaborate with other youth facilities. I, I will say that some of our, we would do things are rather antiquated, based on, based on some staff preferences, and there are other ways of getting kids to receive an education that we, we are not up to speed yet, just because of, of the way things are at our facility. For example, we don't, the only internet use we really have is we have, we use iReady, we use some lock, some programs, some apps that are locked down. But as far as Google apps or the internet, the facility doesn't allow us to access that. And so perhaps with, with the change in management at some point, we can open up some of those other opportunities. But that's, that's us, so are there questions?
Ms. Burnett.
Yeah, just a real small question. At the beginning, talking the detention versus treatment, just curious why we don't offer treatment for females? Because you got the 16-bed unit for males.
So there is one female treatment in the state, it's in Juneau. We do have females in detention, but they're, they're there for short term, yeah.
Mr. Doran.
Looking at the future plans and that particular, building the partnership between the facility and the school district, could you elaborate a little bit more on that? I think would help to inform our strategic planning conversations as well.
I guess that's more informal than formal. This is my second year as head teacher, or actually, my first year as head teacher and my, my second year in the building. And my goal this year has just been to, you know, get to know the superintendent, go into detention ahead of time and talk to the staff on duty, and find out who the new intakes are, what's going on in the unit, what their day is like. You know, having a, having a background in, in both non-traditional and traditional education, I, I'm still pretty green in the world of, of working in a facility. And so being a head teacher, then bringing that back to my staff and saying, this has changed, or can we work on this? That means bringing, bringing the state staff in for safety meetings when we think there are safety concerns, having those meetings when we feel the need. And so I, I guess that's more informal than formal.
Okay, and I look forward to your participation in that during our strategic planning, and I think very much on the line of what Mr. Kind's comments, whereas in terms of looking at that big umbrella of alternative education and meeting needs of students. My other question is in terms of, if you could elaborate a little bit more on the transition for students back to our schools? And I appreciated the, you know, trying to give a quick response to some of those questions today, it was rather short notice. But that you have a coordinator to do that, but I've watched as some of our students have moved into the facility, have them come out, and I'm interested in that, what that transition looks like.
We might not see that transition coming. Oftentimes, they're out the door before we know. And it, I, I know that's, it is strange, but it's, it's, it's the world that we live in there. And I've asked, I've had conversations, well, what do you think, you know, is this person leaving? And then there, we, little to no notification is not uncommon. If, if I do know a student is going to go out in our district, I will, I'll call Mr. Kind and say, I know the student's coming, I know they're with you before they came to us. Here's what we're working on. Amber, our social services manager, she is, she'll go get packets and she'll deliver those to kids. So we are more than willing to build those bridges when we can, but often we just don't know. And oftentimes, they are going to back to Barrow, they're going back to Anchorage, and so they are out of our hands very quickly. But when we do see that coming, we, we do help them with those, that transition process, and our social services manager does, does play an important role in that. She's also the one that coordinates all the functions that happen during summer school and over break. And that's also part of our intake process, is finding out where they came from and understanding if they're going to go back there.
Follow-up. Might be more to administration, just a clarification, and just, you emphasized it to me that though Golden Heart Academy is part of our district, the services are very much regional throughout the state, and. And collaborating with other districts as a, because of that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an important note is that students could literally come from all over the state. While it is regional based, it's not just Fairbank students attending this facility. And so I don't know if Lori wanted to add anything in terms of the transitional services for students. But it is a connection with other districts throughout the state.
So our so, social service manager that's there works on transitioning with our students. She follows up with them once they leave the facility, even if they go to the adult jail facility. If they go back to the schools, wherever they go, she's following up with them. We had, one of our students went to treatment out of state, she followed up with them. And just to make sure that there's a plan, her position doesn't allow us just to drop them from wherever. Just because they leave the facility doesn't mean that they're no longer part of us until they get picked up from another entity of some kind. But she stays with them and follows up. And she's really good at seeking resources, finding out what, what the needs of the family are and the needs of the student and seeing where we can best meet those needs at whatever, if, if they leave and they're out of the facility because they were released into the general population, seeing where we can meet their needs. So a couple of them have come to Beth, a couple of them have gone back to their brick and mortar schools elsewhere. But she continues to follow up with them.
And just, and she's based in?
She's here, she's our, our, yep, she's our employee.
Great, okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
Ms. Sanderson.
So she did send me her question, so she said, I can ask it. Are there any legislative initiatives or statutes that would be helpful to you? Or have been available to you? I can't read exactly, but it says them a lot. Are there any legislative initiatives or statutes that would be helpful, helpful to them or been available to them? Or what might those be? So perhaps is there anything happening in Juneau that would be a part of helping make the work you do better or?
So I know that recruitment for the state has been a real issue. I mean, that's not, I mean, it's, we're the ed staff, but we need the facility so we can have students. And this last year, the people that work with our students on the state side are called juvenile justice officers. And they got a new title, I think they're juvenile justice counselors now. And they also got a raise. As far as what their pension looks like, I'm not sure. But in the two years that I've been there, I've seen a tremendous turnover with staff. And you have, you have people cashing out and leaving state. You just don't have, they're not being retained because they, I mean, there's just nothing really holding them. And so they're seeing other options and they're taking them. And it's, it's been very transparent. I mean, just seeing, seeing a lot of institutional memory go out, go out the window. So from, from our standpoint, from an ed standpoint, that's, that's discomforting. When you look at, you know, the state side and you see just not a lot of folks have been there very long and just a lot of, you know, young inexperienced people. Because things, things happen really quickly and things often happen right under your nose. And then you go back and you find out what happened and you're like, are you kidding me? And so it's, it's easy, you know, to look at our numbers and, and kind of sit back on your haunches and say, okay, this, this is good, this is fine. You know, we don't have, you know, I got a small class. But it, it's amazing what happens behind those doors. And so I've, it's been eye-opening for me. And it's, I continue to be, to learn much each day.
But that sounds partially like the same retirement issues that we're facing. And she clarified later, so that was for me. But you had talked about training and is there some sort of state statute or something that would allow you to get that additional training? Because it sounded like the state was the one offering training that you guys might want to access.
So that's just a conversation that I'll, I'll continue to have with the superintendent. I know that they have different safety trainings and, and they are a, a trauma-informed facility, I believe. And, and they talk about things like complex care and whatnot. And so I, I'm going to broach, you know, just the topic, can we join you for some of those, some of those trainings? Because safety is, is a real concern. And just to be more prepared as a staff to handle certain situations. I have, I have some background with, with kind of the, the trauma piece. I, I've had some training with the youth mental health first aid, but I would like to bring some of those trainings to our staff so we can do some of that together, just so we can, we can all grow.
I have a question for you. Working or looking at your future plans, are there things that the district could do or this board to help enable you to accomplish some of those, visiting other youth facilities or to help you better serve your students?
I think we would have went out with some of those plans this year to, to visit other youth facilities. But we didn't get some of the, the grant funding and that, that's to no fault of the districts. We're hoping if our test numbers meet, meet the criteria, we'll, we'll get that, those monies. And we can go to some, some conferences and we can also, I'd like to take our, our staff or part of our staff down to McLaughlin or, or Juneau or Methol and, and understand how different facilities, how different schools within facilities work and operate and, and work with, with the people there and, and just establish some connections.
Ms. Marotti.
This might be a long shot, but have, it might be for admin or maybe it is a question later down the line. And I've reached out to a couple of people about it. But the Bureau of Justice Assistance through the DOJ, they have a STOP grant that focuses on providing resources, training to staff and students for safety and violence prevention. It's pretty broad. I know that the state of Alaska, districts within the state of Alaska, I used to manage some of their grants for that, have participated in it. They have a current year one, it's an ongoing continuation type grant. Has that been looked at at all for the, the, maybe even just the training piece, the safety and trauma-informed care?
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if it's been looked at or not. I'll follow up with our grants department to see if they've looked at that in the past. And Ms. Beam might have some information.
So we do have a grant that, because this is, this is near and dear to my heart. Because I, they're, they are a great team of people and training and these things are, are what is needed. And because we didn't get CSI, TSI money, grant money, I went to our grant department and asked them if there's anything out there. So we are currently working on a grant that will provide training and conferences for both GHA and for SMART because they both have some of the same issues where we're kind of limited on what, what we can provide. And we need that funding to, to send them.
May I follow up? The, the STOP grant that I was talking about through BJA, their deadline is June 12th to apply for this next year. Can I send that to you guys, just in case?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a federal grant.
Thank you.
And then I have a question, most likely to administration, just because I don't know. How does, I know it's part of our budget, but the October count obviously wouldn't apply to a program like this. Is there funding that follows students that enter the facility or how, how do we fund this program?
It comes as a flat funding from the state. And I believe it used to be twenty-eight students that we would get funded for. And recently they cut it down to twenty-six or twenty-four, I believe. Regardless of the amount of students we have. And it comes over in a block grant essentially to the school district to then fund our staffing at GHA.
Follow-up, is that like twenty-six students run through the foundation formula? Or it's just a block amount per each one of those students?
That's a good question. I would need to come back on that, whether or not that comes through the formula or not.
Mr. Burgess.
Just curious, if, if a board member wanted to come and visit, how would we do that?
Just send me an email, we had two board visitors this fall. And we gave you tour of the facility and show you around.
Mr. Doran.
As I get to my question, I highly recommend it. I've been over there, not just recently, but other times and it's a really good going. In terms of that block grant, you said it was twenty-four to twenty-eight students. And I'm just looking at the enrollment, so it's about half or a third of what the enrollment. But I'm assuming that's, the enrollment might be cumulative students as opposed to?
Sort of the course of a year.
Okay. So the, the block grant basically covers?
I think it's in line with the number of beds essentially that they have is what I've been told that they base it on. Which is, I think, around the twenty number. So that's what I've heard at least.
Great, thanks.
Yes, my last one comes from that visit that Ms. Marotti and I took. And I know I struck out in helping to find skis. But were you able to find cross-country skis for students or is that still a need that you would like filled for next year?
That's still a need.
So to enlighten, we'd love extra help. They would like to have their students be able to ski around their secure facility. And use donated skis as you're seeing them this summer, but for adults is the, the issue, is there larger teenage students, right?
Typically. Our, our population has been trending younger. We've had a lot of middle school students this year, like sixth to eighth grade.
It's still my mission to, by next year, help get you more skis. Haven't forgotten. And if other board members know places to reach out to, I did reach out to some ski shops and was unsuccessful. Or West Valley Ski Swap is where I'm going to look. Thank you so much.
Up next, we have SMART, Students Making a Right Turn, and Ms. Afrika Beatty.
So SMART is my little baby this year. We're changing a little bit over there, but the main focus of SMART is a space for students to continue their education while they're on long-term or expulsion status. Many of my students come over there and they don't have the tools or the strategies to deal with the difficult decisions and they don't make good decisions. So while they're here at SMART with us, we try to give them those tools and strategies so when they go back, wherever they go back to, that they can make better decisions. And I think it's important to note that many of our students have lost faith in themselves and the school that they're coming from. They don't trust the process, they don't trust that anything's fair, even if it is fair. So we're reinventing how they look at education at SMART every day. And for some of them, it's a, it's a short turnaround. For some of them, it never happens while they're there with us. But it is always our goal to reinvent success for them and to give them that hope that they can be successful. I often say to my kids in the movie, The Help. The Help said to the student, you're kind, smart, and you're important. And those are the nuggets like when I was growing up in my parents' home. My parents wanted me to be kind, so they set the expectation that you're kind. So they told me, you're going to be kind to people because that's the minimum you can do. My parents told me I was smart because they knew that I was capable. And they wanted to set the expectation that you're capable and you can do anything you want to do. And you're important. My parents always made sure that I felt like I was important to them and I deserved to be important to others. I get students at SMART that don't know any of those three things. They don't know that they're important. A lot of them come from foster placements. I have homeless kids there. I have kids that simply have given up on themselves and others. They don't trust that anybody cares whether or not they're successful or not. Put my glasses back on. Moving on to enrollment. This year, we have had a total of fifty-seven referred students. Forty-two of those students have come to SMART. The other fifteen declined services. We had nineteen students that we returned or transitioned back to their home school or to a school. So transition for SMART does not mean that they're going to return back to the school that we got them from. When we transition them out of SMART, we transition them to the safest space for them and others. So sometimes that means the time that they're with us, we're deciding what is the best fit for them. And we look at all the programs and all the schools in the district to figure out what is the best fit school for that student. And we make the decision and we set up a transition plan based on their needs. Last year, there were forty-nine students in the program and there were thirty-four full-time students and fifteen also declined services at SMART. But SMART does not just service, that's how we're changing. We, once we transition them back into the school, we no longer cut off services. So we are currently still servicing those students on a site-based service. So my staff, they go out to the actual school once a week to see the students that we placed back into the school to provide that support. Because remember, we, if we go back to them feeling important, if we just cut off our services to them, they no longer feel like they, they matter to us and they do. We get, every day I get a call from a student at a site saying, where are you? Are you coming? I need you. When they're in trouble, the first thing that they do is they run to the office and ask to call us at SMART. Because they know regardless to what happened, because we, we're always teaching them to do better and make better decisions, despite their poor choices, we are pro them. We want them to be successful. So my staff has spent a great deal of time going out. Both of them leave our program two times a week and they go into the sites and they kind of rotate. There's only three of us. I stay at the program because I, I provide the discipline there. The program kind of maintains its continuity as long as I'm in the space. When I leave the space, sometimes things go crazy. But as long as I'm there, it kind of regulates it. So I do send out a prevention specialist and my counselor right now. And they go out into, they go to Ileson, they go to North Pole, they go to all the sites to kind of see our students and visit them once a week. What our program, what our services are. And so that has morphed, I'm not going to go over all of them. The things that have changed the most is what we're offering them that hasn't been there before. Some of our students are older. So now we're doing job placement. So students that are homeless, taking showers at our site, because we, we do that. We provide a space for our kids that don't have running water. They don't have anybody to buy them shampoo or smell goods to make them feel important. We, we go out and we buy all of that and we provide a space for them to come in and have a shower every day. So that they know that they feel important. One of our greatest successes last week was simply the student saying, guess what? This is my last shower here. I now have running water. And we all celebrated that because that has been a challenge for him and it made the biggest impact for him. Just like we talk about his curls, his beautiful curls all the time. Because he was running around looking like a crazy person because he simply didn't have access to any of the things that we take for granted. So now that he had those, he was feeling so much better about himself. He got a job, he's working every day. And he came to me with eight credit hours, he currently has fifteen. He's, he's really coming back. He, I have saw a spark in him that I knew was dead when I got. He's, he's really coming back. I have saw a spark in him that I knew was dead when I got there. And he is a new person because of it. We offer behavior support. So our students kind of do a split schedule. They do academics all morning and then in the afternoon, they see the counselor and have groups. And then they see the prevention specialist. The counselor is there for the social-emotional aspect and the prevention specialist actually works on why they're in our program. Whatever you did to get there, she works on improving those behaviors, giving them those skills to cope with it. So when they get back to the actual school site, those are no longer an issue. All right. So I talked a little bit about our site-based supports. And some of these are gonna be gaps in services that I see that exist in our current service. We transition our kids, but we don't really have a transition plan. We don't have steps that we actually take to getting them back to a site. We have kind of made this up as we went this year to create that for ourselves. And there's still some people in the picture that we're missing, like counselors feel completely out of the loop. So when they get back to their site, they don't know how to service them because they've never been part of the process. So we would like to have a concrete transition plan to help getting those kids back to a school. One of the things that I've talked to counselors about as I've went out into different sites is when they get my kids and they're not successful, what could be in place to help them be more successful? Some of them simply will never be ready to go and leave the structures that we create in SMART. SMART is a very structured environment. We have taken out all the filters. They don't have to make a lot of choices and they must abide by the rules in SMART. And they thrive there because those structures are in place. And when they go back to their site, they're no longer there and sometimes they just go off the rails and they're not being as successful as they were in SMART. And so we want to create an environment. So one of the suggestions was a self-contained, self-contained transition classroom. So kids could very much feel like how they feel in SMART. And when they're ready to go from class to class, then somebody is sending them from, to their different classes. Because sometimes when we give it all back to them, it's too much. They cannot handle that amount of freedom. One thing that we kind of made up as we went this year is the extended placement in SMART. Some of our kids have been given to us for 45 days and it falls at the absolute worst time in the semester to go back to school. So we've kept them longer and their parents have agreed to allow them to stay with us. But that's not something that's really written in stone and we have to kind of roll the dice every time it happens. So sometimes we have students that go back and they just, they're not successful. And then the at-risk students. We're servicing at-risk students at the school site. So when the prevention specialist calls us or assistant principals call us about students that are on their radar, when we go out and visit our students, we also talk to them about the kids that are at risk. And somewhere, we're trying to figure out how to help those kids. They're not in our program, but some of them desperately need our program. But what do we do for those? So those are our future goals on how to fill our gaps in services that are there. And I kind of got off track, but another gap in services, graduation. We have seniors that don't need to go back to school. They just don't. They're not successful there. But they're so afraid to get what type of diploma they will get if they never return back to their home school that it kind of pushes them out the door. So I think there needs to be a conversation about when you end your senior year in SMART, what does that look like? If you graduate out of SMART, what kind of diploma do you get? Because that is a concern for parents. I want to discuss why parents don't choose to send their kids to SMART when they are referred to SMART on a disciplinary. One of the things that I have seen is the messaging that they get about SMART. In the heat of the moment, when their student has been suspended and everybody's mad, they hear about SMART. And so immediately, they don't want to do it. So we lose a student out of the district because they're still mad. Sometimes if I can call them back two weeks later and they're not mad anymore, I can talk them into coming to SMART and that's a good thing. So I'm really working on changing the messaging about SMART. It's a slow process because it doesn't have a positive connotation to it. But that is the goal for us in the future, really changing about how people, when they hear the word SMART, what you think SMART is.
That's the end of my presentation.
Ms. Maple, then Ms. Marotti.
Just on the last thing you said, I think her name was Jane, who I talked to when I had a student get referred to SMART. And so she was the first person that brought it up to me, given I wasn't angry. I was angry at my kid, not at the situation. But the way that she presented it to me specifically was like, I mean, the first thing she told me is that parents want their kids to stay in SMART. So she led with that. So I don't know who has those conversations now, but that was a really powerful start. And I was, I mean, I would agree that I'm glad that you're able to extend services because I imagine if people had the option for some of our kids to stay in that program and graduate out of that program, I think a lot of people would have a lot of interest in that. And I had a question, but I forgot it in my excitement to say that. So I will raise my hand again.
Ms. Marotti.
I also support putting extended services in writing and clearing that up. If I could send so many students to SMART, I would. It's a great program. I'm really excited to see what we can do about transportation to SMART. And what I heard, some of what I heard you say, especially towards the end, is something that Dr. Minor and I have been talking about a lot lately. It's something that I learned at NSBA years ago. And that is positive marketing and what an impact that can have on specific programs or the district as a whole. And when you were talking, I realized we don't market SMART. We don't, and we don't, so then therefore, we don't positively market SMART. And maybe just intentionally including SMART in some of the positive marketing that we do for all of our programs on Instagram, on podcasts, on Facebook, on all of our socials might help transition the perception of SMART because it is such a good program. And I would throw every dime I had at it if I could. Thank you for being a leader in that program.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you for your work and that of your team with this. And I'm really, really pleased with the outreach, the follow-up and the sort of pre-intervention kind of identifying those students who may be headed there, that we could do something earlier. So one of the things that comes to my mind is the impact of staff cuts and the investment in the program. So, and SMART has gone through some recent staff cuts. Could you, you know, when, I was particularly struck when you're there and you've got two people out trying to hit schools. Also that services to the kids who are there. So could you talk a little bit about that? Things we might need to keep in mind for being able to support that type of outreach, that helping students be successful over the long run?
Honestly, I think that if we can create a transition plan that gets more of the key players at the site involved in the process, I think it might help. I do want to clarify that when my staff is out of the building, that only happens when I know that I can maintain the safety of the students there. So if we have stuff going on, because it's SMART, sometimes we have stuff that's going on and I am busy. So my other staff, they stay. So that it doesn't happen, which then comes at a casualty to the students that are expecting their visit and they rely on that. It's kind of a check and balance for them. There's three of us and sometimes, like sometimes there are 20 kids there. I don't know if I could say that giving us another staff member would be fair to all the other students in the district. Because as a teacher, first, I would say that it wouldn't be. So I'm not requesting another staff member. We are using our counselor. And we're gaining a math teacher and we desperately needed a math teacher because that's the one subject that I could not do amongst all the other things that I was doing. So math was kind of the thing that I needed, somebody dedicated to help the children with math. I do see that losing the counselor loses that social-emotional connection that she makes with the students. I don't have a remedy for it. All I can say is the three of us will always make the best effort to do what's best for our students while they're there with what we have.
I'm gonna put myself in the queue and then we'll go back to you, Mr. Doran. Thank you so much for coming and hearing you speak is very enlightening. And I feel like it's, you know, having been on the board when there was all this discussion of CEC and combining SMART and then hearing Mr. Kind say, "Well, they're different demographics." You know, we have one that deals with students who are unsuccessful in school and another one that's dealing with students who are unsuccessful and oftentimes it's because they're also having conduct issues. And though you treat those two reasons very differently, and I really think it's getting at part of his point that we have at-risk students who aren't having their needs met. And I love that you've extended the outreach of SMART to be more a part of following up. And I feel like, especially with the strategic planning, getting, I didn't say it when it was brought up, that that would be a great piece of how do we, instead of SMART only being this thing students are sent to when things go wrong, could it not also be a piece where it's preventative and we have those checks and balances within our secondary schools, but also where we're keeping kids from maybe coming? Or there's, I feel like there's room to expand on all the great stuff you're doing and give more support to there. It's kind of rambling to say, as I'm hearing all this, I'm like, this is great. I love your future plans and that it's about more wraparound supports and services. And I would love to see the board support that and find ways to do that within our very limited means. And I think that's the elephant in the room is we don't have funding to fully address the needs of our students. But the work that you're doing with the limited funding that you have is great. And hopefully, having the one bit we could give you, which is transportation, I could see that being, maybe you extend them at SMART, but there's a way that we could drive them to a high school, to try one class in that here's, instead of throwing you deep end, we're gonna give you a life preserver and then come back and have more of that. Because it is, with the demographic you work with, a tailored approach to each and every student to get them to be successful. Long thing, other than you have my support. And I'm really excited to have you. You worked with the program last year, right? That's what I thought. And so it's very refreshing to hear this take. And not that it wasn't great before, but very excited. Ms. Beam.
I just want to piggyback on what you've said because she is a great asset. And the team that we have this year in SMART is, they are a true team. They all work together. They meet every day after school to go over how their day went, what can they do? And this is what they can do to do better. They're constantly looking at how to improve what they're doing. And when they started reaching out to the schools to follow up with their students, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, I can't believe you guys are doing that," when there's only three of you down there. But they do it and they love doing it. The kids absolutely love seeing them. And it is truly, if they don't show up, the kids are calling or the school's calling to say, "Where are you?" And as long as we can keep doing things like that, it'll be successful and our students will be successful and they won't come back, even though a couple of them do want to come back because they still ask, "What can I do to come back?" Yeah. But great team, great people, and I truly respect all three of them because they're doing great down there. They're doing fantastic work.
Excuse me. We're gonna try Choya again on Zoom.
Go ahead, Ms. Anderson.
Message me with what she wanted to say. She said she would like to thank Afrika for the presentation outside the box thinking and the foundation she's building under the students when they leave the program. It's a win-win for us.
Mr. Doran.
Okay. I think the last two questions I have, I'm intrigued. You mentioned the loss of the counselor, you're getting a math teacher, but I also know, and you're all counselors. It's, you know, but in terms of that position, since many of the students are students who need that, it's beyond the teaching, which we do provide. But I'm just getting that taken on in terms of the importance of having a counselor in addition to that teacher to address math, but having those teachers there.
So at the time, when we were making the decision, the district desperately needed counselors in the building. They were short counselors. At the time, when that decision was made, I did not see, I thought the program would virtually still work the same. Here recently, in the last couple of months, I realized that that is going to be a piece that is greatly missed because some of my kids that have mental health issues, they rely heavily on the counselor. They, the relationship that she builds with them is essential for them. So it is a piece of the program that we will have to restructure based on the new staff that we have. We have already started working on what that looks like for next year. So with the help of our current counselor now and the rest of the team, we're trying to remap ourselves on how do we still have that component in the program in the absence of a counselor? And until something magical happens with funding, that's what we're gonna have to do. Some of us are gonna have to pick up the slack of not having a counselor there. And that's why I'm stressing so much about the transition plan. If the child's counselor that from intake was involved more with the program at that part, then we could rely on that relationship that the child has with their school counselor to help fill that gap. So that's why we're really working on the transition plan.
So if we got more revenue from the state than we anticipate, that might be something that should go into the hopper, at least for consideration. Depends how far we can stretch things, but it's reality. My other question, I was intrigued when you mentioned, talking about the graduating options for seniors. And at firsthand, I thought, oh, well, they're still enrolled technically connected to their, the school they came from in the sense that they're suspended, but they're, you know, so where their enrollment is, they're not. But anyway, I guess, so what happens now when we have a senior graduating from SMART, finishing up at SMART, have earned their graduation, where do they get their diploma from?
Alternative learning systems. So that's the school umbrella that they're under when they're in expulsion status.
Okay. So they do get?
They do, oh, go ahead.
Their transcripts will say alternative learning system. Their actual diploma that they receive just says Fairbanks, Starborough School District. We don't put a school name on the actual diploma that they receive.
Interject. That's what parents are afraid of. Because they feel like the absence of a school is like a time mark, that something happened that their child will have to explain because there is no school there. And so rather than making the decision to let their student be successful and finish out and just graduate, and just graduate, they make the hard decision to send them back to a site even if they know that they're not prepared to go back to a site.
So clarification, so that might be part of that messaging especially to a senior that, and especially if maybe they need that extended time because going back a month before the end of the school year could jeopardize their graduation type of thing or, I mean, that's part of that messaging that I'm just saying so we can make sure they know they can graduate if they apply themselves and, you know, whether they become a fifth year or not, but.
Yeah, definitely and good learning experience for me. I didn't realize that on the diploma. So I think that's something that we can take a look at too because I think it's important to have a school name on a diploma. And so we'll examine that as well.
Thank you.
I think so. Good, green to go. So I've been in the district for a really long time and I'm, I'm what?
Let's introduce you so people know who you are and so the listening public knows who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this is Lori Willett from Star of the North. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, this has been a really long night. You guys are amazing, like, ooh, when you hear, when you read about work sessions, like, holy moly. But just how connected we all are. And so I'm, I've been in the district a really long time and I've taught at many, many schools and my daughter had Craig Kind as an econ teacher, 26 kids and made a buckly and all that. But, and just how connected we all are and it may, I've learned so much, like what everybody does. So I'm relatively new to Star of the North. This is my third year. And so I appreciate Mr. Doren's questions because where we started as a school is really not where we are now. So, and this is like how small world, so our school started in 2005 and it was kind of the brainchild of Annie Keat Barnes. I don't know if any of you know her. I had her son in junior high, so that's how long I've been here. And her demographics or the demographics and I think where she wanted to go with this was mostly students that were working full-time, some were pregnant. Like in the application, it says, you know, are you currently pregnant? And I'll have kids look at it like, really? Because that's not my demographics at all. So we need to change some of those things. Most of them really just wanted to graduate, like they, they, they just, they wanted to do whatever it took just to graduate. And that was sort of the demographics. And I don't know when the junior high component came in. I don't know if that was started in 2005. Because when I got there, it was seven through 12. So I was anticipating seventh graders. Well, we had no seventh graders and we had nine eighth graders. So one of Mr. Doren's questions was like, this has really changed because you used to be, you know, well, after my first year, I was like, why do we have, we're competing with Discovery Peaks, who is like our neighbors. So most put their, so I just felt like we're not gonna get that, that demographic. We're not gonna get those kids because most parents want to keep their kids K through eight, right? That makes sense. So I asked Lori if maybe we could do something like that. So that's why we transitioned from just a nine to 12. And my demographics of what I see now are completely different from that. So the kids that we service have a lot more, so they come from very supportive families. That, but for whatever reason, these kids have not been successful in public school, like none of them. And they, they had to find some sort of alternative. And, and this is where there's so many cracks because a lot of them didn't have enough credits to go to CEC. They, they weren't in either of those. A lot of, I get both ins and outs for best because I'll have some that have, my kids have been homeschooled forever and they're tired of me or, you know, they want more. So, or I get, we're, we're just gonna go to homeschool. Like my kids kind of go back and forth. But what I see is, and our numbers are low. I mean, when I look at, we've got about 58 kids and I know at one point they said the highest was 128, but that was with the junior high. So right now we've got about an average of 15, nine, 10, 11, and 12 on average. So, I have to admit, I had a principal that used to say, never ever bring your computer to like meetings. So I didn't bring mine and I feel kind of weird, like everybody else, anyway. So I was like, oh, but anyway, so I'm not, I'm not looking at my, my, what I said. But what, what does set us apart is that we build relationships. And it's these small classes that enables these kids to be successful. And, and I know I feel very privileged to be able to have those relationships with those kids because that's not what they've found before. So the, my very first year I was sent to the, oh, I wrote it down so I wouldn't, the National Alternative Education Association Conference. And I impulsively signed up to get on the, on the committee. And so it was a three-year program and it was exemplary practices and it was 14 schools. And our, one of, we were picked. And so I've been, I finished the program, so I'm still on the, on the executive board. But the, if you go back to the, we had to put something together like what set us apart. I don't know if this will play, will that play, can she? So this is what sets us apart. I don't know if it might not, it's obviously playing, but nobody can hear it. Oh, but it, it's just a parent testimonial. But it's the epitome of what our students are. So her, her daughter, her, her, they were not successful. They are extremely smart. So we have a lot of smart kids that are bisexual, transsexual. Not just that, but just some are from foster homes. You know, there's just this transition of kids. And this testimonial is just kind of heartbreaking because she thought she was gonna lose her kid, right? Just, and they can come to our school and feel welcome and warm and we've tried to really create a quiet, comforting place for kids to be. And I don't really know what it was like before. Like I, I've just tried to create this place where kids feel like they belong. Everybody belongs. And we respect them as individuals and we do, we, and one of his other questions was like, what can we do for kids, I guess? And because we are small, we can kind of tailor make what, what's working for them. So if a kid's reading at a different level, yeah, we can do different books. So this is much like what Craig does at CEC, only on a nine through 12. So our nine and 10s are direct instruction and our 11 and 12s are indirect instruction. But I've moved towards more symposiums, projects. I want to give them options. So we kind of work more with the kids individually where like, okay, this isn't working for you, what else can we do? What, what would you, this is what we want you to get out of it because they have to earn it. You know, I agreed with, with Craig, like you don't want just, here's your diploma, right? You have to earn it. They have to feel like they've worked for it. But, and what I tell kids or when we interview, so we interview, there's an application system we interview, is that they have to want it. Like if you want it, we'll get you there, but you have to really want it. You have to be self-motivated. And I just, I don't know, what I absolutely love is we've had kids, I, I, I'll get all choked up, but like we've had kids that failed out their ninth grade year, like completely, like zero credits. And they come to school and they're brilliant. And now it came in as a sophomore, she's our junior 4.0 that's gonna get on the scholarship, you know? And it's like, I was so, and she is like, so she stayed at our school. Her dad moved to Anchorage. She's living with a friend. She's working a job, so she, she's three days at school, two days at work. And she got a 4.0. And I'm just so proud of her because, but it's like we tell her, we believe in you. You can do this. And they have to know that. They have to have adults. And, and they might, they have fam, they have families, but they have to hear it that academically you can do this. And I love your help. I know, I love that I'm kind, I'm smart and I'm important. I tell kids that all the time, right? They have to know that and they have to know that they belong. And, and I think that's what makes alternative schools so important. Because I think like, wow, what if they, I have kids that are scared, like what are they, what are we gonna do if they close? I can't make it and I didn't make it there. I'm not gonna make it. And you know, they probably could. But for whatever reason, they can't, right? And so like a freak of what I was thinking, like with the degrees, like why don't, wouldn't it be great if you could transition your kids to our school, right? You know, where it's not, because I was just thinking going from there like, now you're back at Lethrip, woo, right? Like that's insane. But if they could be where like we could really work at that transition where it's, it's quiet, here's your work. You know, that kind of, because we have that kind of structure. I don't know, I just see that how so many of these programs would just dovetail together. And they do, but I don't think maybe we utilize it as much as we could. And it's just a thought when you were saying that and there were just so many things that Craig said too that, well, we kind of do that too. And that's what makes us unique to the district. And, and you know, in all fairness, like there's three teachers, I'm one of them. We don't have a counselor. I'm the counselor and the nurse and I, we did the little principal thing like, oh, I do that too. You wear a lot of hats, right? And I guess for my future or the future, we are doing, you know, we're continuing on with the exemplary practices. It's a great program. We had one of the board members come up to the school last year and he just, he couldn't believe it because alternative schools in the lower 48 are a lot. They can be a real dumping ground for just discipline and, so we're very, very fortunate and, but I think there's so much, they're so important because these kids need to know that they belong, that they are smart, that they, they, they can do the work and they can earn it. And the other part of what we want to do for this year or next year, I think it's the next slide, is one of our English teacher, well, actually our math and science teacher is working with Rhonda Harvey in the district and she want, they want to implement like the science of reading. And so the three of us, so our math, science, I do the history and the English, we want to incorporate the science of reading and it's, it's a program called Lexia. And just so we're all on the same page and we're, you know, and I tell, we are a team. And they'll say, well, you did, and no, I'm not. I work together. We're all a team and we'll talk about it. But I think kids, as long as they can see that there's, like everything is connected. All the subjects are connected and we can work together, they will be successful. But it is a really unique situation. And I guess part of me too is some of the kids that we lose is because they're in town. And, and I know North Pole has a specific grouping, you know, like they come because it is convenient, but they also, more and more so they come because they need it. But I have had kids, one in particular that like they live on, you know, the other, you know, Gina Ridge and it ends up being like they just can't make it. It's too much of a drive and it is a huge drive. So future-wise, I'd love to have something that was nine through 12 where we could hit some of those younger kids because they fall through the cracks. And then all of a sudden it's like, okay, I have to get eight credits and it used to be 16 or something like that, right? Where I just, it would be nice if we could have something else. I know Effie is great. But Effie's more like a regular high school too. Like I, I would love for you guys to come out and see it. Mr. Doren's been out twice. But like we have no doors. We have, we go to the kids. It's quiet and I had a, I had, and a lot of our kids, well, they all have something, which we all do. But she's very autistic and very, you know, everything has to be such. And she came in, she's a sophomore now and she said, you know, Ms. Lori, I'm just feeling comfortable here. It feels like home. Like house, like it's just like, I want to hug her, right? Because it was hard for her. School's been hard for her and people are not kind sometimes. And that's all we, you know, it's like, no, we are kind. We are all kind. So that's kind of me in a nutshell. I know I probably rambled. It is way past my bedtime, guys. I get up at four in the morning. I'm at work by five. So it's been a really long day. But I, I've really enjoyed it though. I mean, I love seeing how everybody works, right? I'm like, I didn't know that about e-learning. I mean, I kind of did, but I kind of didn't. I mean, you guys are amazing. I don't know how you do it. I mean, yeah, anyway, sorry. I think that's it.
Ms. Beam.
I just want to add to what Lori is saying. For her, this is her third year. I think probably halfway through your first year, when I went out and I said, the atmosphere in here is so different. She's made it her own and her, she has brought her team along with her. It's a very calm, and I think I've, I've mentioned that, I don't know how many times during your first year. It's so different. It's walking and you can just feel the, oh, non-stress, very, very calm. And it's interesting considering there are no walls. It's, the kids are doing what they need to be doing. And the director from the National Alternative Education Association, he said, this is like being in, at a conference. Her kids do what they need to do. They're, if they're in the middle of learning, if they have to go to the restroom, if they need to go get a bite or something to snack on, they get up, they go, they don't raise their hand, they don't wait to be called on, they just get up, they go do it and they come directly right back. And he was so impressed with that. It was, he just kept commenting, I can't believe how adult-like they are in getting up and doing it. And it was really, he stayed most of the time with the freshmen and sophomores. So, yeah, it's, it's interesting and I would encourage you all to go out and visit. I would encourage you to come visit any of these programs because they're all fascinating, they're all unique. And I, I enjoy all of them.
Mr. Doren, then Ms. Mangle.
I'm gonna start by saying this is really a celebration this evening. And I think each of the presenters, it's appropriate to say, I mean, your passion, your commitment to kids is really, really evident and it's one of the reasons why I've enjoyed my association with this district for over 30 years. And so really it's a thank you to all of you and presenting tonight. I did have two questions regarding Star of the North. And you mentioned demographics have changed. And I asked the question not in terms of minimizing what you're doing for And I ask the question, not in terms of minimizing what you're doing for students. I've seen it and I've, what, and I've, I've been out there multiple years. But that demographic change, uh, as we enter into strategic planning, has, if we know, if we have a sense, is that changed in the service we're providing? Uh, and so attracts a different demographic? Or is there an additional need for some of the students that we served, that demographic several years ago? And I'm just putting in the hopper that we've lost that avenue for some of those students? And, and how that might inform our conversation over the next year?
It's a good question. I, I don't know, um, how it's evolved to what it is.
Oh, I, I can respond to that.
Oh, okay, good.
Because I think your demographics changed to where you had fewer middle school students coming when Discovery Peak opened up and they started pulling in those middle school students.
Right.
So as they started leaving, because I could see it. As they started leaving Star of the North, they went next door to Discovery Peak. And some of, I mean, they were the actual students whose parents put them in over there. They did not want to be at North Pole Middle. They didn't want, um, they wanted their kids to be together. So when they started getting in at Discovery Peak, they just kind of moved over that way.
Okay, that's.
I, I think your question though is like with the, like.
The service.
Well, the, the kids that are working full-time, that, that are pregnant, those, that demographics that was early on? Is that the question that you're asking, or that demographics?
Yes, that's, that's part of that. And, and it's broader than, than those things. Because I do remember when they, it was North Pole Academy sort of, basically at the mall. And I remember the students who came and testified to the board then. And then it becoming, uh, Star of the North and the demographics, which were, um, of students then. So I mean, it's evolved over multiple years. So I'm just trying to see, and then in the last few years, it's evolved again. And, uh, you know, also there have been staff cuts, which might have meant that you couldn't serve that some of the need, higher needs of some of the students were different. Maybe I shouldn't say higher, but different needs. And are we losing those pieces? And so it, it may be not be a question to be firmly answered tonight, but I, I think we need to have it out there and do some conversation. So as we look at maybe that umbrella of alternative education, and especially for North Pole, um, how we, how we look at that, so.
I, I would agree with that and welcome those conversations. We've had other conversations with the principal at North Pole High in terms of a school within a school for those students that we know want to stay at North Pole High but need more support, similar to innovations, um, that could work out there. So I think there's certainly more room for alternative options in the North Pole, I, the North Pole High area. And welcome those conversations.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
So related to that, and one of my questions was in terms of, uh, the building which we rent was designed for a hundred students and for a, a need. So, um, I'm just, you know, again, my, my question is facility conversations that serve, uh, the current and future students, so.
Uh, so currently, um, we have a lease with that building. We're in the process of exploring what the capacity would be to get out of that lease. There is a clause in there, I believe, at a five-year mark, uh, for us to potentially exit the lease. And that would, or could happen sometime this summer, um, if we wanted to go in that direction. What I will say is, um, when we were talking about this previously, some of the spaces we thought we would potentially move Star of the North, um, North, uh, North Pole Middle or North Pole High will now be, North Pole Middle specifically, um, will be to capacity. And North Pole High will have fewer spaces. And so it's something that we would need more conversation around. But there's certainly, uh, it seems like the ability to get out of that lease potentially within the next year.
Thank you. I have one more question.
Can I go a follow-up on that though, um, to you? How would moving the location to some other space affect how you serve your, your population?
If they could have, like their own entrance, their own, um, because like, again, we have some, we have quite a few that have a spectrum. So if they had their own like entrance that we could keep it quiet, you know, like they, they, I, because I think some of them would really have a hard time going into like North Pole High School. Just because it would be super loud and super, like it would, that would be really hard for them. You know, I mean, for me, the building has had, it's, it's a lot of work because it's not a district building. And so I have to do all the work. Like I have to do a workaround with the owner, who's very, very kind and very supportive. But it's, it's, it's very challenging. Like it's just because I, we, the district doesn't own the building. You know, it's just, it's like in between things and it's hard. That would be, I, and we've talked about it as, as, as a staff many times. Because there's, I, it's a gorgeous building. It's beautiful. I, yes. But it's also like got big cracks and it's got, it's cold. I mean, there's lots of things, right? So, um, I, I like the, I, I mean, my thing is if we were a school within a school with like North Pole High School, then, because we do offer our kids, our junior seniors, if they want to take, um, electives over at North Pole High School, as long as they have transportation, we support that completely. And we've had quite a few take advantage of that and take the welding and take culinary arts and all of that. Where if we were in that building, they wouldn't have to worry about transportation. So there's a lot of benefits. There's pros and cons. My biggest fear is that, just the size of the loud and the size. I think it would be really hard for them, some of them, yeah.
So one more follow-up. Would moving into like some of the empty capacity, like a wing of Ticasic or one of the elementary schools, would that be more approachable for your students where we have this space?
Probably, yeah. Something smaller.
Mr. Doran.
Could you elaborate and maybe give us some examples of the exemplary practices that have been noted by NEEA about Star of the North? Good brag opportunity.
You want me to go through the exemplary practices or you want?
Some examples of.
Oh, just like inclusivity, um, how you, um, a, a variety of teaching, I guess, teaching skills, you know, like they'll, they support, um, having teachers be the, have students be the teachers. Having, um, I have, tomorrow, actually, I've got my, um, I've got three sophomores that are going to teach, um, Latin America to the kids, right? They, and, um, it's very cool. I, I love when kids become teachers because then they're like, wow, this is really hard. You have to do all this because they have to do lesson plans and they have to do it all. And they're like, holy moly. So I, it's those kind of things. They, lots of, there's like fifteen exemplary practices, um, you know, academics, teaching skill, you know, just, I can send them to you off the top of my head, but, but yeah.
No, that's it for this time. But I would like to, yeah, if you could send it, it'd be really interesting, I think, too. And, and just, uh, a note, if we could make sure the updated slides wasn't in this section, but in two of the sections, there were some updates to the slides. We have the updated presentation and, you know, posted later for the public. Well, it'd be through Carm, so they could post it on the agenda.
I'm not seeing any further questions. Thank you so much. I would love to come out and visit. It is a school I haven't yet made it to.
Anytime, yeah.
And I so much more want to.
Come tomorrow. They're making food.
I wish I could. But maybe. With that, I think we are adjourned.